The July 21st, 2020 Town Council meeting to order this time. Just a quick comment up front, if this is the first time for any of you, obviously, you have noted that our seating arrangement is somewhat different and obviously we're trying to ensure that folks have lots of space in between. We're doing social distancing, I guess. And so if there's not enough room for everybody here, we have an overflow room upstairs. Madam Clerk, do you know if we've had to send anybody up there or is everybody who wanted to be in the meeting is here in the room as far as you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and you do know there is a mask policy for the governor's orders, so we ask you all to comply with that. Okay, if you will at this time, I would ask you, if you can and will, stand unless honor our country by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Okay, it's my privilege this evening to recognize a gentleman that some of you may know. I've had the pleasure of meeting him in the past. Dwayne Calvin is one of our chaplain for our police department, and he's also affiliated with the, I believe it's the New Hope Church, is that right, Mr. Calvin?
Hope Community Church.
Excuse me, yes, okay, thank you. So he has graciously agreed to come out and lead us in our invocation this evening. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for the safety, thank you for the protection, thank you for the covering that you've provided, and thank you for bringing us here tonight to give us the opportunity to work together as a town council. Tonight, I pray that you would guide us in unity, that you would satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, and that you would strengthen this council as they make tough decisions. Father, I pray that they would work together well. I pray that you would guide this council tonight so that the meeting can be productive and ultimately the citizens of this great town of Garner will know that they have a council who cares for them. Let the council be effective, let the council be decisive, let the council operate in unity. And Father, we'll be very careful to give you the praise, honor, and glory for any benefits that come from this or any good things that happen because all good things come for you. We thank you for these things, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Calvin. Appreciate that. Okay. All right, our first order of business is always an item called petitions and comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff may be scheduled for a future agenda. And so I have a list of a couple of names, or two or three, I'm going to recognize these folks, and let me just say upfront that I think there are some persons here who wish to speak to an issue that is on our agenda this evening, and the council will be hearing that and taking some action, so just be aware of that. I would ask you to be conscious of your time, and we'd like for you to keep your comments to three minutes or so, no more than five minutes if you will. So I will first of all recognize Ms. Sarah, I believe it's Olson. Yeah, there you are. Okay, if you would come to the podium there, please, and give us your name and address.
Sarah Olson, at 3725 Randall Road. I'm in the Cloverdale subdivision, and we have land that's directly north of us, that most of us when we bought our land was told it was protected wetland, it would never be developed, and now it's owned by Raleigh. And they are, we were notified of a neighborhood meeting, which we attended, and they've already rezoned it to apartments. It's a CU, I think, whatever their code is. But now they're trying for higher density apartments. And they had the mandatory meeting that they have to have, that we were invited to attend, and we had a lot of probably wouldn't, might not, don't have plans, not sure, and some very concerning things. So as a neighborhood, we're going to come together, we're very concerned about this development, protecting the wildlife, pollution, there's a stream that runs there, the plans, they don't have any, they don't have any to share at this time, tree protection, they're probably going to save 20% of green space, won't give us any answer, probably wouldn't, maybe more. The feel of the developer was very, like I said, he was, they were shifty, it was the lawyer speaking for the developer. But what, and flooding, our, we already have infrastructure problems in Garner, a lot of our sewers are blocked off with debris, and the runoff runs down, ours runs down into the stream, so it's not bad, you know, it has a place to go. But the most concerning thing was that Raleigh wanted to, they're gonna, they're absolutely, they're convinced, going to cut through one of the streets, Northview or Randall, and connect it to Raleigh, which has zero benefit for our neighborhood. We have no sidewalks and the traffic, we already have a litter problem and a speeding problem, we have, I petitioned to get speed bumps on Meadowbrook because of the cut through from Garner citizens. I can't imagine what Raleigh citizens are going to do. But that's a nutshell, I want, I don't see, I don't see how they can force this connection to Raleigh, and I don't see the benefit for Garner, and I want you guys to stand behind us and help us with this. Anyway, that's pretty much a nutshell, it's going to be a long, they're going to have another neighborhood meeting, and it's just the starting of it, but I really want to watchdog that planning. I don't, anyway, I didn't get a feeling of trust from them. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, do you care to comment on that, or should we just indicate we'll, I know you and I have had some discussions about that?
Yes. But it is part of a rezoning at the end of Tryon, there's some vacant property there, wooded, and there is kind of a deep ravine and a creek, and they will have to take measures to protect those type of features. But Randall Road and Northview both in at that property, and it is typical to have connectivity regardless of the jurisdiction, it just so happens that right where those roads end, that is Raleigh's planning jurisdiction. So there's going to be some neighborhood meetings, I guess, set up by the city of Raleigh, and some informational meetings, so I would encourage all of the residents that are concerned about that to attend those meetings and make sure they take any opportunity to provide public comment, their comments about the project. I'm not sure what we can do as a town, being its private property in another's jurisdiction, but we can, you know, make sure that, I guess, we let our residents' feelings be known to the folks in Raleigh, and maybe they'll take that in consideration. But it is, it is at the edge of other single-family development, so it's just part of, I guess, development, it's just a matter of how they develop it and what they put out there.
Unless you had a question, that I think our planning department maybe has had some interactions with the city of Raleigh. Again, it's not something we have jurisdiction over at this point in time, and I don't know what, if any correspondence has really occurred between planning here and the similar department in Raleigh.
I know our planning staff will be involved in some meetings and probably attending some of the sessions and trying to gather more information, so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Just for a point of clarification, I know this is kind of a new precedent, you know, stub outs within city limits, of course, we've got things we can do in regards to that, but going into another jurisdiction, I guess my question is, is it mandatory that we open that street up to Tryon, or what's the, what's the, I guess, the rule of law, or how does that work out? I mean, because we're in our city limits there and theirs, and that street has been cut off all this time. Now Raleigh's coming up, which is their right to come up, but are we required to open that street up to the city of Raleigh, or can it be stopped right there, since it's in our city limits and not part of their jurisdiction? That's just a question, I'm not sure, sir.
They want to get the planning director who's on teams with us to answer that, I'm not sure if he's prepared to answer that, but he may have some comments to share about how that works with the various jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Jeff.
Hello. I'm not sure as to the legalities of everything, but the right-of-way is stubbed to the property line. What I have seen in some jurisdictions where this kind of issue has come up and there has been concerns, sometimes there's a temporary barricade put up if the connection is not quite completely made, they see how things go. Sometimes the neighborhood finds out that there's not as much cut-through traffic, again, it all depends on very site-specific kind of situations. So we have been in touch with the planning department in Raleigh. As the lady from the neighborhood noted earlier, at this point, it's just a zoning request, so we don't have any site-specific plan information, and so a lot of that stuff really gets worked out in the details of the site plan. Depending on where the stream features are, there may be larger buffers, there's going to be at least 50-foot required on each side of those riparian buffers, Tryon Road has to be extended, so it's really unknown at this point how much of that development would be right up against the Garner City Limits, or whether or not most of it might be pushed to the north end with the road and substantial buffers in between, I just don't know until we get to that portion of the plan. Unfortunately, in Raleigh, they do entertain zonings separately and independently of a site plan, whereas here we require them to run together. So at this point, it's just really a question for their city council as to whether or not they feel the change in the uses that are allowed are appropriate.
That's the information as we have it right now. I'm sure, depending on what additional information your office receives, or at this point, you would advise people like Ms. Olson to stay in touch with contacting the city of Raleigh as a first order of business, is that right, in terms of sharing information and receiving information?
Yes, because it's been my understanding that although that applicant has been to talk to the city of Raleigh's staff, they may have discussed some very preliminary plans generally, but there has not been any kind of site-specific submission that has been left with the planning department as any kind of public record that would be available. So we are continuing to, you know, reach out on our end to see what information is available, when it's available, and we would encourage the residents to do the same.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, I have reached out to Raleigh, okay, but I do implore Garner, I just, I cannot, the benefit of cutting through these streets to Garner, you know, like into Raleigh, and if there's anybody to stop it, I just please be on our side, I just, the small streets in our neighborhood, you have no idea, and ways has changed everything with neighborhoods and connecting streets. So it's just, we're just beginning to realize, you know, what streets will become by ways, sending them through their neighborhoods to skip two stoplights. And the traffic, pre-COVID, the traffic on Garner Road was already backing up to Northview. Like, on busy nights, it would be already stop and go on Northview, and they were cutting through our neighborhood to skip the traffic. But I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I know the town manager and I rode out there about a week and a half ago, and we visualized where this is, this is subject to happen, so.
Please help, please protect us.
Thank you very much. Before I call up the next petition, I should note that obviously I did not ask the clerk to call the roll. Ms. Gibson, I'm inclined maybe just to wait until Mr. Singleton gets here, and I guess we could call the roll at that time. Okay, thank you. Okay. Not sure who goes first, but I have a Mr. Stanley White, who has indicated an interest in speaking to the council. And again, I would remind you, Mr. White, and to put the next speaker, too, that this is a matter we're taking up on.
I understand, I certainly understand, I'll only take a moment of your time. It seems like it was maybe early March when the COVID first hit, I made a decision to quit smoking. So in order for me to aid myself in quit smoking, I decided I was going to use the greenways in our public parks, which was just a fantastic opportunity. But on June 26th, I was crossing Timbers Road at the crosswalk there, and I was struck by a car, or a vehicle. And now I understand that I am at fault for failing to yield the right-of-way of a motorist, so I'm just not sure what the crosswalks are there for.
Well, is it, obviously the crosswalks are there to hopefully aid pedestrians in getting across, and of course, some action that I believe is going to be taken later on tonight should enhance that process and make it a safer, safer place, but I.
I don't understand how a pedestrian that should have the right-of-way can be found at fault. It's just my only concern here this evening.
Oh, okay, I don't have any legal opinion on that, that I think I could help you with, but, and I don't know the circumstances, I regret that the accident happened, obviously, but, okay, we have anybody else who wants to?
I think Ms. Hicks may be speaking also, but thank you.
Okay, yes, I have another person who wants to speak. Ms. Valerie Hicks, I believe it is, all right. Hicks.
All right. I'll take this off a little bit. Some of you have known me, I work EMS here for 11 years, and this is my home. I love this town very, very dearly, and I live two houses off Timber and Buckingham, where the speed limit goes from 35 to 45. Most of the time, it's 65 to 75. We're working on that, I understand. The day in question that Mr. Stanley was hit, he was hit in the middle of the intersection, I mean, the crosswalk. He had pushed the buttons, which you cannot see the lights at all at the intersection, and he was hit by a motorcycle who was speeding. I'm not, I don't understand why he was charged either, but if you look at the Department of Transportation's 20-173, it says, "The driver of a vehicle emerging from or entering an alley, building, entrance, private road, or driveway shall yield the right-of-way to any pedestrian or person riding a bicycle." That right there states everything. I understand that the crosswalk will be moving, I think it's a great idea. One setback is if the speed limit is not changed to 35 or lower, plus it is close to a school zone, this is going to happen again. I myself have almost gotten hit about four or five times, pushing the button, waiting for traffic, looking both ways, waiting, 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 I don't see anybody. I get part of the way through, they don't stop. I had one car stop about six feet in front of me, she was on her phone and looked at me like I was crazy. I'm very careful, I've got a background of being careful, safety is my number-one issue. I've also had to pull my car out into the area a little bit to where I can wave my arms to make sure that other people are safe to get across. One man had to pull his child's stroller back, or he would have been hit, and I watched the whole thing right there. There's been many people. I like the idea of moving it down to be across from the greenway wall entrance there, but if we use the same lights, it's going to be the same thing, nobody can see those. I work for an LED company, I know exactly what we have, and they're inefficient. If they're not larger, not like a strobe or something very, very obvious, we're going to have many more people get hit. I don't want anybody to die there. I've dealt with a lot of people that have been in car accidents and everything else, it's not a good thing, and the family suffers, the town would suffer. And I think it would behoove Garner to really address this issue, make sure it's a safe environment, safe crosswalk, as with all crosswalks, because Garner is doing wonderful. We are exceeding in almost everything that we do, much better than any of the towns around. But I say again, those lights have to be changed, they have to be a lot more obvious, and the speed limit must be changed. So I appreciate you guys looking into it, but there's still a lot of work that's got to be done.
Thank you, just a couple of things. I believe you're related to Mr. Jeff Hicks, is that right?
Alan.
Excuse me, Alan, I'm sorry. I've heard, yeah, yeah.
I brought him with me.
I've heard from him, sorry. And as I said, I hope and believe that some action tonight will be a big step towards, hopefully, making that a much safer crossing and doing what we can to ensure that folks don't endanger themselves as they make a crossing over there, they have a chance to cross over to a median, I think.
Well, it'd be nice, but like I said, those lights, nobody sees them, especially with the light, the sun coming east and sun coming west. I went out there this afternoon, and on my phone, I've got two videos of me just trying to get across, and it wasn't even, what do you call it, rush hour traffic yet, nobody stopped. I walked part of the way out, and I almost got hit twice, and I'm watching, I'm not going to jump out in front of it, but nobody can see those lights, so they do need to be changed, but thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, could we have the town manager work with the police department to provide us a little more information on Mr. White's situation, please?
Yeah, I was going to look into that, because I don't know how fault is assigned, and whether it's done at the scene or not, but yeah, I will, I will work with him and the interim police chief, Ben, to figure out how that happened, and what the proper procedure is for that, so.
Okay, those are the persons that I had who signed up to speak this evening. Were there any others, now is your opportunity, if you haven't signed up, if you want to speak to the council? Okay, hearing none. Thank you for those who took the time to come out. Ms. Clerk, I believe I will now, if you don't mind, have you call the roll for us.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there's someone.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see your hands, sir. Go ahead.
All right, just a couple of questions I have for the.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Ryan Prather, I live at 7812 Crestwood Drive in Raleigh, but I know that the town of Garner has some jurisdiction of the stuff that I've done on my property over there. I had a question about the Cambridge development that's going to be happening, I'm not sure if you guys will be able to answer this, or if it's going to be another meeting for that, but I'm curious about, is there going to be a traffic lights on 401 and around like the Catty Road area, because I know they're going to be developing on the opposite side of Catty Road with some retail businesses, I'm assuming, so I'm wondering how the traffic is going to take, because I live, to get to my house, you have to take Catty Road, so I'm wondering if there's going to be a light right there or not. Also, I know there's a cellular tower that's going to be over there, I was just wondering if they had any plans on working around it, because it's looking like it's going to be right in the middle of their development for some residential properties. And also, I was wondering what kind of exactly the retailers and businesses that they plan to bring on, I was hoping it's not going to be any more like car washes or like another Dollar Tree or Dollar General, we already have those in the area, so I was hoping that they would be conducive to the area over there, something that would bring in more revenue and more attraction to the area. And I was wondering also if they have those specific businesses in mind, has anyone already stepped up to take those spaces that are available? And that's all I have so far, so if you have any insight on that, I'd appreciate it, or if you could let me know when's a more appropriate time to receive answers for these questions.
I think the town manager will speak at this point in time. Again, I believe what you're addressing is going to be, we're going to be having, conducting a hearing on that a little bit later on the agenda.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I could speak now or then, okay.
Because it's part of a quasi-judicial hearing with certain procedures and practices on how that's to be conducted, it would probably be proper for him to wait till the presentation's made, have that be part of the record if he would like for it to be.
Okay.
As a comment, but not as part of evidence.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Correct, refer to the attorney.
Okay. Okay, anybody else care to speak? Don't want to miss anybody, okay, all right. Let's go through the formality of calling the roll now, Ms. Gibson.
Mayor Marston.
Present.
Mayor President, here.
Councilmember, here.
Councilmember, here.
Here.
Councilmember, here.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, the next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. You have that either on your laptop or in hard copy, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Suck it.
Okay, moved and properly suck it. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and it's so ordered. Madam Clerk, I'm not aware of any presentations, I assume you are not, you haven't been notified of any, right? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda, counsel, entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, properly made, motion and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it is so ordered. Counsel notes, I'm sure, from the regular agenda that we do have a closed session this evening, that we will get to at the end of our regular agenda. Okay. The first item of business now under public hearings is CUP SP 2001, White Oak Business Ms. Allison Jones, I believe, will hear this, but I need to read to you all the procedure and process that we must follow. So there are some rules governing these hearings that are required by law that we must follow. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it is more formal than other public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. I will now inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or have you had any expertise communication, or any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome? If so, you should indicate that at this point in time. Are there any, counsel? Okay, hearing none. This is a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony. Counsel members are reminded that you're only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. And I would ask all speakers to respect time limits so that we can work our way through these items in an expeditious manner. And we would ask that those who are speaking would do their best to minimize any repetitive testimony. So with that, let's see, I guess I need to swear witnesses at this point in time, including those who will be presenting, so if you expect to give testimony at this particular hearing, if you will, please see the clerk in the back, and she will have you sworn to an oath.
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm going to swear you at this time.
Thank you, okay. We'll officially open the public hearing, CUP SP 2001, White Oak Business Park, and Ms. Jones, I believe, will be our presenter. Welcome, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Councilman, and everybody in the audience.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Councilman, and everybody in the audience. I will be presenting DP Electric Lot 13, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2001. The applicant is Chris Rakowski with TM Tony M. Tate Associates, DP Investment Properties LLC. 701 Brick is located at 701 Brick Steel Lane. The tract size is 2.79 acres. The planning commission heard this project at a June 15 meeting, and is before you tonight. As I mentioned, the acreage is 2.79 acres. The proposed use of flex space totaling 11,900 square feet. There's no minimum lot size, but there is a minimum lot width of 100 feet. The setbacks for the front are 50 feet, the rear is 0 to 50, side 025, and the corner is 35 feet. And here is a copy of the site plan, and the colors are showing you different perimeter buffers and street buffers. The building will be constructed of brick and prefinished metal panels. There is no open space required for this project, as it is a commercial development. The required tree coverage for this area of the project is 10%. They are exceeding this requirement with existing plant material that is to remain. The plan provides for a covered area of 35.7%. The perimeter buffers are 15 feet wide. The eastern buffer has been reduced to seven and a half feet because of existing evergreen hedge on the adjacent property. The proposed site plan and adjacent use are the same buffer classes. There's a 16-foot, excuse me, 65-foot buffer yard in the rear of the property that is required by the Conditional Use Zoning District 147. 50 feet of the 65-foot buffer yard is to remain undisturbed. The remaining 15 feet will be a landscape burn. The street buffers, a 15-foot horizontal distance separation only along Brick Steel Lane frontage, and the street trees are being provided 40 feet on average along Brick Steel The lighting for this site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations, for LED fixtures. All fixtures have a zero-up light, low glare, and warm lighting exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 K. The inspections department, together with the fire department, have reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. The parking for this site is based on one space for every 500 square feet of gross floor area. They're required to provide 24 spaces with 1 ADA space. They're proposing 28 with 2 ADA spaces. This site does not contain FEMA-designated floodplain, however, it does contain a newsrever repair and buffers. No development will occur in the environmentally sensitive areas. Stormwater management of this project. DP Electrical is a commercial development site that is not located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen only. Since the development remains under 10 pounds per acre per year threshold for nitrogen export after development, only nitrogen side-off payment is required. No stormwater control is required. A previous study of White Oak Business Park East to demonstrate the detaining water would be detrimental to the downstream watershed, so no water quantity device is required at this site. The infrastructure, the connection to the city of Raleigh, public sewer and water systems will occur through existing infrastructure for the site. Brick Steel Lane currently has curb and gutter. Sidewalks along the site's frontage will be provided under the site plan. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not have any recommendations for Brick Steel Lane. As currently constructed, Brick Steel Lane is a two-lane facility with curb and gutter, and built to local street standards apart from this provision of sidewalks. With the addition of sidewalk, the plan may be considered consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensway Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations for the project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of building permit, payment of the engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the public utility fees shall be paid to the city of Raleigh. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required. The planning commission heard this request at the June 15 meeting. With unanimous vote, the planning commission confirms staff's findings in Section 5 of the CUP SP 2001. DP Electrical is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. Any questions for staff?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. Counsel, questions of Ms. Jones? I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dellinger.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Vance.
Mr. Smith.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Matthews. Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. If you have something else, I guess we will hear from the applicant at this point in time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Rakowski with TM TLA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive, Durham. Thanks, Allison. Well done. Pretty much everything said. Thank you for this time, thank you for your time this evening. The site is located on Brick Steel Lane off of Rayner Road in the White Oak Business Park. It's consistent with the character of the rest of the kind of light industrial buildings in the area. I have Mr. Pruitt here as well, he's a developer, owner. He is relocating his electrical business from around the corner on Rayner Road into this building, give him a little more room to operate. Yeah, there's not really much else for this one. We're happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Just before you leave, let me see if counsel, I won't call the roll, but does anybody have a question for this gentleman? Okay, you got off easy.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Are there others who wish to testify for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Are there other folks who are here who wish to speak to the issue, perhaps in opposition to this item? Okay, not begging for anybody, just wanted to know if there are any. Okay, so you've finished, Ms. Jones, nothing else from the town? I'm going to, excuse me, close the, close the public hearing, and I will ask counsel for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to CUP SP 20-01, DP Electrical, I move the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency. Section 7 of this report is our own, and finally, the application meets the 10 permit criteria, section 3.14.0D. Therefore, approve CUP-SP-20-01. Rand Village with the three standard conditions and nine site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
It's not Rand Village, it's DP Electrical.
It's DP Electrical, you're right. Is it sitting there, and I read DP Electrical, or am I wrong? Am I correct? CUP SP 20-1, DP Electrical.
Thank you. I didn't catch that, Mr. Singleton. Okay, motion's probably been made, has properly been made and seconded. Any other comments, questions by counsel before we vote? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote at this time. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And the motion is carried unanimously, and it is so ordered. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Jones, sure enough.
Thank you.
On the second item, let me see, Mr. Paget, I guess I'm supposed to read my prefacing remarks.
Well, it's probably not necessary.
Okay, okay, okay. I will, well, I will at this point in time just ask counsel if there's any expertise issues on this particular hearing, as noted in our previous comments. Hearing none, okay. So persons who are expecting to give testimony in CUD Z1911 and CUP SB 1904 Rand Village, if you will, see the clerk over here, or were they sworn already? I guess, okay, everybody's been sworn, okay. All right. So, all right, Mr. Banford is up. I'm going to open the public hearing and recognize Mr. David Banford.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a conditional use rezoning request with a conditional use subdivision request. There is no site plan associated with this request. There's not a multifamily site plan or a commercial retail site plan associated with this request. This is to subdivide several large tracts of land and to have them rezoned for future And any development that occurs on these tracts would have to come back to counsel for site plan approval as a public hearing. The most recent similar-type case would be White Oak Northwest and Northeast, where Cabela's is, that originally came in as a commercial subdivision, showing the out parcels and the street layouts with the zoning request to get that zone for commercial use. So that's kind of the most recent comparable-type case that you have seen. The property is located off of US Highway 401. There's a large tract on the west side of 401, and there are two tracts on the east side, north and south of Caddy Drive. Total acreage is around 54.5 acres. And Planning Commission did review this request at their meeting on June 15, and did confirm staff's findings for the rezoning, and then also recommend approval on the subdivision This is a Google Street View of the project and rezoning site. The picture on the left is looking east across 401 down Caddy Road. And there are two tracts, you know, Caddy North and Caddy South, to have those rezoned for multifamily. The street view on the right is looking north on 401 with the McCullers Shopping Center off to the right, with a large vacant tract on the left or the west side, just north of the Sheets, with that site to be rezoned for commercial use. This is a aerial photo of the rezoning sites. The large tract on the west side of 401 would be rezoned to service business, conditional use. And the two tracts on the east side of Fayetteville Road on Caddy North and Caddy South would be rezoned to multifamily, conditional use. This is another aerial view of the project site. 1010 Road is located to, I guess, the southwest, and that is the jurisdictional boundary between Garner and Fuquay Varina. So Fuquay Varina's jurisdiction is on the south side of 1010 Road in this area, and Garner is on the north side. And I also will point out, it's not shown on this map, but the McCullers' development with the apartments, townhomes, and single-family is on this site here that is shown, I guess, graded on this map behind the McCullers Shopping Center. This map shows the zoning in this area. The property on the west side of 401 is currently zoned service business, conditional use. And this was done in late 2017, with no development that had occurred since that time. There are new plans for development for this site. Down in the east, I'm sorry, the west corner, the project boundary has changed slightly from the 2017 boundary. So in 2017, the boundary is what's shaded in red, and the outline in orange is the new proposed boundary for rezoning. So this small portion here, Zone R40, would provide some additional street frontage and access into the site off of 1010 Road. The McCullers Shopping Center is zoned service business. There's a small commercial activity center at the northwest corner with a Sheet. I believe there's a pharmacy, maybe auto parts store. That's zoned community retail. The McCullers Walk Development with the apartments, townhomes, and single-family, that is zoned multifamily 1, and that's located on 100 acres here behind McCullers Shopping Center. And the project site north and south of Caddy Road, that's currently zoned R40, which is low-density, single-family. This is a list of rezoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case we have on file was from 1989, and the most recent case was 2017, where the service business portion of this project site on the west side of 401 was rezoned from R40 to service business, conditional use District 197. Also to note is Garner did an ETJ expansion in 2017, and that's reflected with this case number here, Z17-01. The existing zoning for the properties north and south of Caddy Road on the east side of 401 is zoned residential 40. This is approximately 27.9 acres, and this is a low-density district primarily intended for large lot developments of an acre or more on well-inseptic. On the west side of 401, approximately 26.8 acres, this is currently zoned service business, conditional use District 197. And again, this was rezoned in 2017 with the intent to develop a commercial shopping center at that corner. Under this, under this conditional request, the applicant has proposed zoning conditions. The requested zoning classification on the Caddy roadside of 401 would be from R40 to multifamily 2, conditional use District 224. And this, this is a high-density residential district that allows apartments, townhomes, and condos. On the west side of 401, the proposed zoning classification would be service business, conditional use District 224. So it's going from one conditional use district to another, and it's also picking up a small portion of land added to the project site that's currently zoned R40. Next, we will go through the list of zoning permissible uses for both sides of 401. For the multifamily 2 conditional district, the applicant has proposed that the following uses on this list would be permissible. Townhomes, condos, multifamily apartments... Townhomes, condos, multifamily apartments, residential cluster, duplexes, group living, community service, daycares, educational facilities, healthcare, parks and open space, religious institutions, utilities, entertainment, which would specifically be country, club, private, and bed and breakfast. In addition to the uses, the applicant has proposed the following additional conditions. Number one, an amenity center with a pool shall be incorporated within a multifamily development in the multifamily two zoning district if the total multifamily dwelling units within either parcel one or parcel two exceed 250 units. If the cumulative number of multifamily dwelling units within both parcel one and parcel two exceed 250 together, then an amenity center with a pool shall be incorporated within either parcel one or parcel two. And parcel one and parcel two is, the tract on the north side of Caddy is a parcel, and the tract on the south side is the other parcel. Number two, the multifamily development shall include a dog park, including a pet play area, if the total multifamily dwelling units exceed 250. Number three, no blank wall exceeding 30 feet in width will be allowed on any multifamily building larger than 1,500 square feet. Blank wall is a building elevation that contains no windows and no design or material articulation. Number four, exterior building materials shall consist of a combination of masonry brick product and/or masonry stone product with up to two different brick product colors for architectural articulation, EFA, stucco, and cementous fiberboard, provided, however, that the elevations of all exterior walls, excluding windows, doors, and recessed balconies, shall have a minimum of 50% masonry. All buildings will use masonry with one or both of two brick product colors in order to provide architectural uniformity. Next, building elevations facing a public right-of-way or customer parking shall have no more than 35% EFA materials. Next, roof on walkways that extend from the front or side elevations of residential buildings shall be constructed of standing seam metal. Doors and windows shall use color and materials complementary to the exterior building materials and roofing materials. Petch roofs on residential buildings shall be constructed with dimensional asphalt shingles and/or standing seam metal. Next, the following exterior building materials shall be prohibited: vinyl siding, public street lighting. All zoning districts in this rezoning shall use similar light poles and light fixtures for all public street lighting. Public street landscaping. All zoning districts in this rezoning shall use similar streetscape materials for all public streetscape landscaping. Next, all site lighting for parking and private internal drives shall be installed on round black poles at a height no greater than 37 feet above the ground within the service business conditional use zoning district and 25 feet above ground within the multifamily two conditional zoning district. So that concludes the zoning conditions for the multifamily portion of this project site, which is on the east side of 401. Moving to the west side of 401, the applicant has proposed the following conditions for the service business conditional use District 224 zone. The following uses would be permissible on this site. Uses under community service, daycares, educational facilities and services, government facilities, healthcare, religious institutions, funeral homes, parks and open space, utilities, entertainment, which would include indoor gyms and athletic facilities. Uses for office and overnight accommodations, hotels and motels and extended stay, commercial parking, and retail sales and service. And under that category, you have personal service uses, repair, indoor sales, sales with indoor or outdoor operations, grocery stores, banks and financial institutions, convenience stores with and without fuel cells, veterinarian kennels, indoor only, open-air markets, hair and barber salons. Restaurants would be permissible, self-service storage, vehicle sales and service, light industrial indoor only, wholesale sales and indoor manufacturing and production, no outdoor storage or outdoor operations. In addition to the permissible uses for the commercial portion, the applicant has proposed the following conditions. Exterior building materials shall consist of a combination of masonry brick product and masonry CMU product in up to two different brick product colors for architectural articulation, EFA, metal panels, stucco, or cementous fiberboard, provided, however, that the elevations of all exterior walls, excluding windows and doors, shall have a minimum of 50% masonry. Cast-in-place concrete may be used as required in loading dock areas. It may also be used as partial foundation stem walls at the base of exterior walls due to grades. Number two, all buildings will use masonry consistent with one or both of two masonry brick product colors in order to provide architectural uniformity. Number three, the percentage of masonry used on different sides of buildings may vary above or below the 50% minimum, subject to approval by the town planning director to allow the use of more masonry on exterior, customer, and public roadway facing elevations. Next, building elevations facing a public right-of-way or customer parking shall have no more than 35% EFA materials. Next, anchor tenant buildings, parcel one, shall be no more than 40 feet in height, except where required to screen HVAC rooftop units as measured from the finished floor elevation for such building. Out parcel buildings, parcels two through five, shall be no more than 35 feet in height as measured from the finished floor elevation for such buildings. Next, the following exterior building materials shall be prohibited: vinyl siding, public street lighting. All zoning districts in this rezoning shall use similar light poles and light fixtures for all public street lighting. Next, public street landscaping. All zoning districts in this rezoning shall use similar streetscape materials for all public streetscape landscaping. Next, all site lighting for parking and private internal drives shall be installed on round black poles at a height no greater than 37 feet above ground within the service business conditional zoning and 25 feet above ground within the multifamily two zoning district. So that concludes all the zoning conditions proposed. There's conditions proposed for each side of 401, for the multifamily portion on the east side of 401, north and south of Caddy Drive, and also specific commercial zoning conditions for the larger tract on the west side of 401. Next, we will look at the Garner Forward Long Range Plan. We will look at the future land use map, and then we'll look at the guiding principles and the plan. On the future land use map, the Garner Forward Plan designates most of the area on the west side of 401 as neighborhood commerce center. The only conflict would be the small little portion here that is designated as mixed-density neighborhood, and that was because that was in a red, that was a property line back in 2008 when the plan was adopted. On the Caddy roadside, on the north, on the south side, the portion that is also designated as neighborhood commerce center. For a neighborhood commerce center, the plan recommends retail sales and service, convenience stores, restaurants, or office. The portion on Caddy North, that is designated as mixed-density neighborhood center. And under that designation, the plan recommends residential development over two and a half units an acre with a mix of single-family, townhomes, and apartments. Moving to the guiding principles of the plan for working places, this is on pages 69 through 74. Steph finds that this commercial rezoning request to service business conditional use District 224 is in support of the following. Number one, attract unique commercial establishments, page 68. This rezoning can provide a unique mix of retail services together and one convenient location for Garner residents. Number two, the plan states, "Don't wait for lightning to strike. Proactively seek out the companies and businesses people want to see." More of in Garner, for example, restaurants or industrial, page 69. This rezoning can provide for new restaurants and other eating options for residents living in this area of Garner. Next, the plan states, "Ensure that existing regulations allow new kinds of hybrid office, retail, industrial, and even housing combinations in commercial areas of town." This is a practice and policy on page 69. This rezoning and proposed development could support this goal of mixing and combining different compatible uses, specifically commercial, retail, service, office, and also multifamily. Moving on to living spaces, and this would apply to the rezoning to the multifamily two conditional use District 224 area on the east side of 401. Living spaces is discussed on page 63 through 68 in the plan, and Steph finds that this rezoning request is in support of the following. The plan states, "The younger and older residents, millennials and boomers respectively, share many of the same desires in a living space, proximity to shopping and services, and appreciation for greenways and fun places to gather," page 63. This zone provides a dog park and amenity center and pool for multifamily developments over 250 residential units. This multifamily zone would also be in close proximity to shopping and restaurants at 1010 and 401. Next, the plan states, "Promote multifamily housing in select areas," page 65. This zone would allow multifamily in an appropriate area where high-density development has already occurred to the south at McCullers and 1010. Next, we'll move to recreational opportunities. This is also a guiding principle in Garner Forward, discussed on page 76 through 82. Steph finds that this rezoning to the multifamily conditional district is in support of the following. The plan states, "Parks play a vital role in neighborhood life, providing a place for children to play and residents to meet," page 76. Parks can be public or private, and this zone provides for amenities, including a dog park, an amenity center, a swimming pool for multifamily developments over 250 residential units, and these would be private parks and amenities. Moving on to the zoning consistency statement. This requested rezoning from single-family R40 and service business conditional use District 197 to service business conditional use District 224 and multifamily two conditional use District 224 is partially consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. It is consistent with the guiding principles for working spaces, living spaces, and recreational opportunities. And it's, this rezoning is also compatible with the surrounding zonings in the area. We have multifamily zoning where the McCullers Walk Development is. We also have service business and community retail zoning in the area as well. While it is consistent with the guiding principles, it's not consistent with the future land use map for the property on the east side of 401, Caddy South, where that was designated as mixed-density residential, no, I'm sorry, it was designated as neighborhood commerce center. Therefore, this rezoning will require an amendment to the future land use map to designate this 9.58 acre area from neighborhood commerce center to mixed-density neighborhood center. So this planned amendment would only apply to just one tract of this project site. So this concludes the zoning presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Stacy will pick up and go through the details of the subdivision plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford. Need to catch your breath there for a few minutes, I guess, here, and that's quite an involved presentation. Council members, any questions while Mr. Banford is at the podium here regards his presentation? Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Banford. You spoke of a couple of the conditions in multifamily two district about the amenity center with a pool, parcel one to exceed 250 units, and a dog park if it exceeds 250 units. Then down in the explanation that you were just reading, we talk about the recreational opportunities. Steph finds this multifamily two, excuse me, multifamily two C224 request is supportive of the following: Parks play a vital part in neighborhood life, providing a place for children to play, residents to meet, yada, 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 parks, yada, this, that, and the other. This includes a dog park and an amenity center and a swimming pool if it's over 250 residents. Well, what if it's 240? Don't you think they still need an amenity center, a swimming pool, and a dog park?
I can say something about that. Sorry, they have made official application for that. It has not been reviewed yet, but I believe it was 266 units.
So to answer your question, it was, if it was 240, it would not trigger the amenity. However, they have turned in a site plan that is track, that is tracking behind this zoning that does show a multifamily development with these amenities. So that has not got to Planning Commission or council yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Banford? Mr. Delinger?
So the, just to clarify, what's the maximum density allowed on the east side?
The, under the proposed zoning, I believe multifamily two is around 14 units an acre.
14?
Mr. Vance?
Yes, Mr. Banford, in reference to the 9.58, 9.58 acres that will have to be amendment to the future land use map, what's the total acreage on that side, on the east side? What's the total acreage on that side, on the east side?
I believe the total acreage on the east side is 27.9. And then the area that would need the plan amendment, I believe, is around nine acres.
Approximately 30% of the total acreage on the east side. Okay. How often do we go through an amendment of the plan? Your land use plan?
How often?
Yes, when was the last time we did it?
The last time, I do not remember, but we have, we have done quite a few since Garner Ford. We've, I cannot remember off the top of my head, but we have done quite a few.
Mr. Vance? Since Garner Ford's been adopted, about every other development, we've had to amend it. I mean, we've amended, we've amended it about every other time.
Gotcha.
So quite a few.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Dellinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question of Caddy Road came up a little bit earlier. What is the proposed fate of that connection, connecting road?
I don't have that, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yes, I was hoping to make a little gap. That, the fate of Caddy Road was decided with the McCullers Walk project. That is going to be converted to the super street function, so there will not be a light at Caddy Road. However, folks will be able to make a right out, go down, do a U-turn to go southbound on 401. They will also be able to turn left into Caddy Road off of southbound 401. So it will not be a signalized intersection, it will be a super street intersection.
Okay. Good. Any other questions for Mr. Vanford?
Can I follow up, Mr. Trezenberg on the super street? Their DOT is in the process of making 401 a super street further down as it even comes into the Garner City limit, correct? That's, that's what's being proposed, and they'll be doing it in sections, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others for Mr. Vanford?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question in reference to that. This probably goes to Jeff in reference to the super street design. The super street design typically has been proven to be more, less conflicts, more easier movements than your typical traditional intersection, correct?
I think generally that's the opinion of transportation folks, is that it's always easier to make a right onto a busy street than trying to make a left across it. And then it's just a matter of really giving folks enough time, once they make that right, to get over to the left-hand side of the roadway to then make the U-turn. But yes, generally, it's much easier.
Okay, so those who may have concerns about a possible four-way intersection at their point really have not really much to be concerned about based upon our history that we have with the super street designs when it comes to getting in and out and moving around in the flow of traffic in that area.
I would tend to agree with that. It does, it does take a little bit of getting used to at first. But I've been, I've lived in locations where they've built a couple of these now, and folks generally seem to get the hang of it pretty easily.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Vanford.
I have one more quick question.
Yeah, okay, go right ahead.
And this is not directly related to the rezoning information we got, but what date did the neighborhood meeting letter go out for this project? What is it dated?
I don't know that I have that information, the applicant might could answer that. We do have in the report, you know, when the meeting was held. I don't have the information right now when the letter was actually sent out.
Applicant have that information?
I'm trying to find that, we'll, we're gonna look it up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay.
I'll wait until they.
Let's see, are we gonna hear from Ms. Harper next before we hear from the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanford. Recognize Ms. Harper at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, this is for the subdivision portion of this development. 54.5 acres, minimum lot size for the two designated categories, zoning categories they are asking for. Service business, minimum lot size would be 6,000 square feet. For multifamily two, the first lot would need to be 5,000 square feet and 3,000 square feet for each subsequent lot. The setbacks you see there, service business, 35 in the front, zero when it does not abut residential in the rear, 25 feet where it does abut residential. The side is the same thing, zero lot line where it's other non-residential, 25 feet where it's against residential, and 35 feet on a corner side. For multifamily, the front is 35 feet, rear is 25 feet, side of 15 feet, and corner side of 25 feet. There you see the parcels that are involved in the subdivision plan. Currently, the service business parcels, as David has laid out, as well as the multifamily parcels on either side of Caddy Road. There is none, no open space required on the commercial subdivision portion, but on the multifamily section, there will be 10% open space required, and that will be reviewed when the site plan is submitted and reviewed. It has been submitted now, but it has not been reviewed yet. Tree coverage of 10% will be required and will be reviewed with each site plan as those come forward. Those will also come back to you for review. Perimeter buffers, again, we will review those at each site plan stage. The street buffers, since this project is within the US 70401 overlay, a 7.5-foot street buffer is required per that overlay district. And street trees are provided every 40 foot on average along Fayetteville Road, 1010 Road, and Caddy Road. Lighting for the sites will be reviewed as the site plan is reviewed. The fire department, along with the inspections department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this subdivision plan. The site does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. The parcels on each side of Fayetteville Road will be evaluated for stormwater during the site plan review. Both the commercial parcels and, the commercial parcels and the multifamily parcels will connect to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities System. For infrastructure, for 1010 Road, the proposed commercial development has approximately 220 linear feet of frontage along 1010 Road. Westbound 1010 will be widened with curb, gutter, and sidewalk installed. Additional right-of-way will be dedicated to accommodate the new road section. A new driveway into the site will be installed across from Chalice Lane. On westbound 1010, a dedicated right-turn lane will be provided for the site driveway. On eastbound 1010, a dedicated left-turn will provide access. The existing left-turn lane off of eastbound 1010 into the adjacent property to the west will be removed. And a traffic separator will restrict the existing driveway to right-in and right-out movements. Along US 401, the commercial development also has approximately 800 linear feet of frontage on that side as well. This section of US 401 will be widened with curb, gutter, and sidewalk to be installed within the existing right-of-way. Two driveways will be provided into the site. A dedicated right-turn lane from southbound US 401 will be installed at each driveway. Along US 401 and Caddy Road, for the residential section of the development, it has approximately 680 linear feet of frontage on northbound 401. This road section will be widened with curb, gutter, and sidewalk to be installed within the existing right-of-way. The development will not have direct access onto US 401. Access will be onto Caddy Road and then onto 401. A dedicated right-turn lane from northbound 401 onto Caddy Road will be installed. And Caddy Road will be improved to a Town of Garner Minor Collector Street. It will be widened and curb, gutter, and sidewalk will be installed. Additional right-of-way will be dedicated to accommodate the new road section. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Fayetteville Road as a six-lane divided arterial and 1010 Road as a four-lane divided facility. The plan does not provide any recommendations for pedestrian or bicycle facilities. With the proposed roadway improvements, this project may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in the project area. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with that plan. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Construction drawings submitted to the Engineering Department and the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department will be required. All public road improvements to include sidewalk, curb, gutter, and road widening on 1010 Road, southbound US 401, and US 401 median shall be completed prior to the first commercial certificate of occupancy being granted, which would be on the west side. All public road improvements to include sidewalk, curb, gutter, and road widening on northbound 401 shall be completed prior to the first residential certificate of occupancy being granted on that side. All public road improvements to include sidewalk, curb, gutter, and road widening on the north side of Caddy Road shall be completed prior to the first residential certificate of occupancy being granted on the north side of Caddy Road. And all public improvements to include sidewalk, curb, gutter, road widening on the south side of Caddy Road shall be completed prior to the first residential certificate of occupancy being granted on the south side of Caddy Road. The Planning Commission did review this at their June 15 meeting. By unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 7 that CUP SB 1904 Rand Village is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. The Commission further accepted staff's statements regarding partial zoning consistency/inconsistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section 5 of this report as their own, and recommended approval of CUDZ 1911 to the Town Council by unanimous vote. Staff also, staff recommendations for rezoning requests for the CUDZ 1911 and the subdivision plan, CUP SB 1904, conformity are highlighted in the motion worksheets that are in your packet, starting on page 48 of your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. The applicant is also here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. We'll take a round. If you have questions for Ms. Harper, start with Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dellinger?
Could you go over the south entrance to the property? Is that, is there gonna be a left turn allowed out of there onto 1010 Road going east?
I believe that is the case.
There?
I don't think there is, I don't believe there's a median on 1010 Road.
Is there no concern about how 1010 gets backed up there like everywhere else in Garner? Is there any concern about making those left turns onto 1010 Road?
We will be looking at that, and of course, 1010 is a DOT-maintained street, so they will also be looking closely at that during the widening plan stage.
Do they come back with some recommendations based on their analysis? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Vance, no? Okay. I'm going to Mr. Matthews. Singleton?
The follow-up of Mr. Dellinger's asked, but it talks about a traffic separator restricts the existing driveway to right-in and right-out. But you're saying on a new driveway, they'll be able to turn left? I'm just asking, what you want?
I have a quick presentation, I'll address some of the traffic. But that, to answer your question now, there is no left turn out of the first entrance, which is currently there with the advanced auto parts. The second entrance will be, has been approved for a traffic signal, which we would install at our expense.
Okay, I answered the question. Where is that traffic signal?
It's not there today, but it will be on the former known as Daddy Road, which is a, been abandoned, and we are constructing that road now. And then that will line up with the entrance into this property.
We probably should get you to identify yourself. I don't believe we had, gave you that opportunity.
Well, thank you. Jay Priestor with Cambridge Properties, 831 East Morehead Street, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Mr. Mayor, can you recognize Jeff Trezenberg? I think he had some other information to share with us.
Okay, before Mr. Priestor goes, yeah, okay. Mr. Trezenberg, I recognize you at this point in time.
I'm generally good, but I did want to take a moment to point out that in response to an earlier question about density, this location is in the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. So any residential development is capped at six units per acre for the entire development. And also, the commercial is capped at 70% impervious with proper stormwater controls. So this is not a case where zoning can really be maximized because of the limitations of the Swift Creek Land Management Plan.
How do you fit 250 or 60 units, six units per acre on only half this property?
The acre, but it gets calculated from the total acreage of the, of the project.
Even if it's a different zoning type?
As long as it comes in as one development proposal, it is allowed to use both.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Trezenberg while we have him up on deck? None? Okay. All right, Ms. Harper, are we finished? Are we ready for the applicant now?
Yes, sir, I have their presentation to load.
Okay.
Is there a clicker?
Great, thank, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. Jay Priestor with Cambridge Properties. Also joining me this evening from our project, or from Cambridge Properties, is Barrett Blackburn. And then our project team includes Wyatt Bone with Boulder Engineering and the Timmins Group. Also is here Jeff Horkenduckel, who handled the traffic impact analysis for this project, as well as the traffic signal analysis. Just a little backup, Cambridge Properties, we have focused on retail grocery-anchored shopping centers over the last 30 years. We also do a lot of single-tenant build-to-suits. And also, over the last 10 years, have really gotten more into the multi-use development, master planning of the development project, which would be very similar to what we're working here in Garner. So I'll work through the first slide. Thank you.
I can switch for you if you need me to. That'd be fun.
Perfect, thank you, that'd be great.
That'll be fun.
So these are a couple of example projects that we've done. Next slide, please. The single, that's project team, one more slide. So this is the overall project that, and staff did a very good job. We've been working very closely with them, probably for at least six months on this, maybe longer. And then even furthermore, going back to the 2017 zoning that was approved for the SB portion of this property. We started out with that piece, the 26 acres on the western side for a grocery-anchored shopping center. Unfortunately, that, after having assigned a letter of intent with that user... Unfortunately, that after having assigned a letter of intent with that user, going through the rezoning process, um, our tenant backed away. Um, and out of a lot of what at the time may have seen a, a negative for us after going through the zoning, presenting in front of this board, um, it's turned out to be a positive because it allowed us to take a more of a macro approach to this project, to Garner, and frankly also Fuquay Varina, which is to the, uh, south of 10-10. So you'll see very lightly colored, and I don't have something to point to it, is the Royal Creek subdivision. And I think this is important to kind of how this whole intersection of 401 and 10-10 has come together. So we are under construction with that development that is on the Fuquay side, but we've also realigned the traffic signal. And David explained how we're adding about a fourth of an acre of land to this zoning because what we've been able to do is work out with our neighbor to the west to move that traffic signal further away from the traffic signal at 401 and 10-10 to create better spacing between the two. So that's one of the reasons for the rezoning, but we're very happy to have that done. Secondly, we have closed on the western property, the 26 acres that's currently zoned service business. And, uh, coincidentally, the same property owner who we purchased that from owns the two tracks on Caddy Road. So we went back to them and said, let's look at this as a master plan development. We see more and more in the market trend of residential and retail and that they're both complementary to each other. And so we've been, um, uh, excited to be able to propose this in this location. Next slide, please. A little bit more zoomed in, um, you'll see the different parcels. And again, David did a great job explaining the, uh, and Stacy, one more slide. This is the subdivision again that Stacy went in for the, or described on the service business side with the four out parcels. Next slide. This is the multifamily, um, portion on the eastern side of 401. And, um, thank you, next slide. I wanted to, I know there's a few questions about traffic, wanted to address that and kind of tie that into what NC DOT is doing. Uh, since 2017, we've been working with DOT on toll 540 and also the interchange or intersection of 401 and 10-10. The good news is, is they're finally moving forward with 540, the portion between Highway 55 and connecting it to I-40. And we feel like that's probably the most strategic next section to get done. Obviously, we would all love to see it get completed sooner, um, but we're, that's very in, um, important to the traffic patterns that we see at the intersection around our property. So, um, the new interchange with 540 on 401 is just about a mile south of our property. Um, and then there's some dual left turn lanes at 401 and 10-10, um, or on 401 that go on to 10-10 that we've been working with NC DOT on, and I'll show a graphical, uh, map shortly. Next slide, please. So this is, um, the, in orange, you'll see that is the 540 that is under construction, the portion between Highway 55 and Interstate 40. What's important to notice is we've also, uh, have identified the location of our site, but also 10-10 Road in blue. Um, that is, um, as long as I can remember, and I've been in the area for, uh, about 20 years, um, that has been a two-lane road. It's got a, a lot of traffic on it for what it is. We're doing some improvements on it, uh, for the Royal Creek project, which is on the Fuquay Varina side. And then we'll also be doing additional improvements, which I'll describe this evening on the Garner side of 10-10, so to speak. But what we're also seeing, and this isn't, um, this is from other projects we've done in Charlotte around, um, 485, is that when we have a parallel road, so we have a existing, uh, two-lane road on 10-10, uh, with some modifications to it today with more coming, but we have a parallel toll road. And what'll happen is, is it's actually beneficial for us as the developer, is it takes the traffic who's trying to get from Holly Springs or Apex or Cary to Johnston County. The only east-west connector road today is 10-10 Road. And the people who are taking that and frankly who are causing the traffic issues are not stopping at our shopping center. They're not necessarily living here. They're trying to get from point A to point B. So when 540 toll lane opens up, we see that traffic alleviating on 10-10 and using the toll roads. And that is the, allows the, the people who live in the community, who shop at our shopping center, patronize our restaurants, will be able to use 10-10 Road more comfortably. Next slide. These are the additional road improvements that, uh, we are doing as a part of, uh, our project. Instead of reading through the words, I'll go to one more slide that shows the, um, the actual, um, road improvements. So I'll talk through this. I know there's a lot on this page, but I'll orient you, um, to the page again. The orange is 401. 10-10 Road is kind of going up and down on the screen. Um, just let you get oriented, the Harris Teeter and then the food line, just to kind of orient you there. All the orange is what will be done between NC DOT and Cambridge Properties as a part of our project. The most strategic two points in this slide are the two, are dual left turn lanes. So if you're going north on 401, going towards Raleigh, and you want to make a left on 10-10 Road, you now have two lanes to do that. Currently, there's one lane. We also have that same traffic movement going east on, or southbound on 401, going east on 10-10. So extending the taper, extending the stacking and doubling it, uh, with two dual lefts. Uh, we also will have, um, on, staying on 401, as you go into our multifamily, uh, portion of the zoning, going north, we are adding a full right turn lane on to Caddy Road. And then also you see a little bit of green once you get beyond Caddy Road, and that's an acceleration lane. Uh, going down Caddy Road, we are, that is currently a NC DOT road. Uh, NC DOT has looked to Garner for their specifications of what they would like to see there. Um, Garner has implemented their street section and we are going to, uh, build that complete street section there. It will also match with the McCullers Walk portion that they are building on Caddy Road. So curb gutters, street scape and sidewalks. So that will kind of complete a street today that is, uh, not well-maintained and it's a ditch section and not lit either, um, very poor lighting on it, and we'll add streetlights to that. Going to 401 South, we are adding a full lane along the frontage of our property. This is on the frontage of the SB part, uh, property. And that will continue through. There's some restriping that will get done to create that full right turn lane. So there'll be three lanes, uh, in that section of 401 going southbound. You get to 10-10, that will be that dedicated right turn lane. Today, um, it's a little bit unique. It's all striped. There's some pavement there, but it's not fully striped out or it's crossed out, meaning don't drive there. And then it comes back in to make a right turn only into the Walgreens. Uh, that will stay, but we'll have a dual through lane there, so you'll have a right through lane. So instead of having one lane and jumping back into a right turn lane, it will, you can go stay in that lane all the way through. That will extend up to the entrance. That is currently full movement with the advanced auto parts today. Uh, that is a problematic, um, uh, movement there for left turn. As we know, the stacking from, uh, 10-10 at the traffic signal backs up beyond this movement. There's a church on the Fuquay Varina side of 10-10 directly across that has a very, um, prosperous daycare program and preschool program, and there's been many erects at that and it's, um, uh, a problem. So that will become, we are going to install a median there to restrict that left turn movement, so that will become a right in, right out only. In conjunction, we've been working with our neighbors, uh, both the church and everyone around us, and I can speak to that momentarily, but, um, they will now have full access on Chalice Lane. That is just to the top, uh, above the church. That is a dirt road that was formerly known as Daddy Road and that was abandoned by NC DOT. We have, um, acquired all that property and are now constructing Chalice Road, and that will become a Fuquay Varina Town Road. And the church will have access, uh, and the families who patronize the church to Chalice Lane so they can access the traffic signal. So we're very happy about that. The other thing we were able to accomplish with this is, uh, as I mentioned earlier, was to move the spacing between the traffic signal at 401 and 10-10 and our new aligned intersection at Chalice Lane. So we actually created a further distance to allow for a traffic signal there and better spacing and stacking. Also, in conjunction with the installation of the traffic signal, we'll be installing, um, uh, sequencing of the traffic signals both at 401 and all the way back to Lake Wheeler and 10-10. So when one turns green, they're sequentially timed so that you don't have to stop again. Um, we also have that full right turn lane on 10-10 that will be, um, addressed to go into the traffic signal, into the SB commercial property. We have, uh, I'll go ahead and that's, really hits the, and again, I didn't mention that the sidewalk, street scape. Stacy did a great job explaining that. We'll add that there is some sidewalk out there, there's some missing pieces in it, and so we'll make that whole connection. Um, it's important for us to have a, uh, improved street scape there to go back to the fact that we are developing across the street in Fuquay. We're going to be developing across the street, uh, in Garner at the multifamily piece and that we kind of bring it together and look at it wholesomely. We have approached, um, all of our neighboring, uh, property owners, uh, to talk with them, share our plans with them. Um, again, with us being somewhat, um, been working on this project since 2016, uh, we've gotten to know them quite well. Uh, we hope to acquire more land and work with them as they're ready, and that's really how we've kind of continued to acquire more pieces around this intersection. But all of our planning that we're doing today with the properties we do own and control is to set it up and tee it up for the future. And whether that may be interconnectivity, whether it may be, uh, land use, um, and so on and so forth. So, uh, next slide, please. Uh, part of creating, um, you know, multi-use development is creating a sense of place, raising the bar and not saying, we're coming in here and we're going to build a single building and then move on to the next project. And if, and we feel like this more wholesome 55-acre approach to this side, 50 acres on the Fuquay side, that we're investing ourselves in the community. And, and part of that is, is delivering on what we're proposing. And so, uh, we have established some design criteria that are minimums, um, that we expect to exceed. Uh, sometimes at this stage of a project, we haven't gotten into the full design, so we try to restrict ourselves, uh, in working with town staff, um, to show our commitment. And I think we've done that, um, here. When we come back in, hopefully in the next few months for site plan approval, uh, we will be able to share specific elevations that meet this criteria that we've outlined. So there'll be another opportunity to look at exactly what we're going to be building. So each out parcel, each multifamily building, uh, each anchor building will become back in front of your board, uh, for review as well as the site plan. Um, I did want to before, I know, uh, to keep it brief, want to address a couple of questions. I think Councilman, uh, Dellinger, you had asked about the meeting, uh, date. We sent out notices for our neighborhood community meeting on March 11th, and that meeting was held at the Calvary Baptist Church directly across the street on March 26th. Uh, we recognize that that was the couple of days before Governor Cooper, uh, put into place this shelter-in-place or stay-at-home order, and we, um, wanted to, we did not have anybody show up, um, to this meeting. So we did send a follow-up letter on April 16th, um, just informing everybody that we did not have anybody show up to the, uh, neighborhood meeting, but we still are happy to jump on virtual meetings, uh, and, um, discuss by phone or email, provide any information. We had, uh, two property owners, uh, reach out to us. One of the property owners was on Caddy Road. His property was, uh, a rental home backed up to, uh, our property, and, um, he was very supportive of it. The second one, uh, was a property owner just to the north wanting to know, ask a few questions about the, uh, traffic and the U-turn bulb location and asked if that was moving. Uh, it's not. That is in place today, and, um, he was supportive of the, of the project. We have met with the HOA of the, um, I'm trying to think of the name of the community, but they're just on Caddy Road.
The McCullers?
Lakeside Estates. Um, and we have worked very closely with them. They seem to be in support of our project. We did require a sewer easement for our sanitary sewer through them that they've granted us, uh, to serve sewer for the project. So that would, um, speak to their favor of, of our project. Again, thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Priester. Um, council, uh, questions at this point? Let's move it along as quickly as we can.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
They may not be quick. Um, one of the roles of the council is determine whether or not you've met all the terms and conditions for this rezoning. And one of the things that is a condition is this neighborhood meeting. And when I first looked through the agenda and noticed no one showed up, I found that interesting. I was curious. And so I looked at the date of it and it was the 26th. The governor declared a state of emergency on the 10th of March. Schools were closed and groups of 100 or more were banned March 14th. March 17th, bars and restaurants were closed. March 23rd, school's closure was extended and groups limited to 50 or more. 24th, he requested a major disaster declaration. Two days after that is your neighborhood meeting. Our neighborhood meeting in our UDO reads, purpose. The purpose of the neighborhood meeting is to educate neighbors about the proposed development and application, to receive neighborhood comments and to address concerns about the development proposal. Number two, applicability. At least one neighborhood meeting is required for an application for conditional use district zoning, planned development or special use permit. Number three, procedure. The applicant shall conduct said neighborhood meeting in a place generally accessible to neighbors living in close proximity to land subject to the application and prior to review by the Planning Commission. And the notification is 10 days before the meeting. I have a very strong problem with you all sending out a neighborhood meeting notice at the beginning of a pandemic, holding it after a major disaster declaration and then wondering why nobody showed up. It is not adequate, according to our UDO, to send follow-up emails or phone calls to achieve the neighborhood meeting. It may be considered community outreach, but it is not a neighborhood meeting. I don't think that you have held a neighborhood meeting for this project. It is not accessible if there are restrictions on people's ability to assemble in groups. That's not accessible.
Thank you. Um, we did take into precautions, the, uh, different measures. We did host it outside of the church. Um, we also had a, if the weather was not cooperative, we had a procedure to have, well, 10 people in the room. We had, uh, chairs spaced out. We did have, uh, hand sanitizer there. Um, should anybody felt uncomfortable, we were fortunate to have good weather to host it outside.
With all due respect, people at that time, and I remember, were scared to go anywhere.
It's been interesting times.
It's very interesting. And when you talk about, I mean, the development is fine, but you have to meet the requirements of a neighborhood meeting. And I appreciate that you sent follow-up letters. I appreciate that you reached out to folks. We had Ms. on in here. They hadn't done some outreach, hadn't done it. They did some. They had 80 people show up. They made an extra effort to do it. I have a problem with kind of rushing through this process during the course of a pandemic when the point of the UDO is to get public input. Now, this hearing is another opportunity for that, but the conditions and terms, even the spirit of this part of the UDO have not been met, in my opinion. And so I've got a problem because I don't think that you've met all the conditions for this rezoning.
I will say that, um, during our 2017 zoning for the SB portion of the property, um, we didn't have any opposition from the neighborhood at that time either.
That was a different application, correct?
Correct, it was. I just wanted to, it wasn't unusual to us not to have, um, anybody show up, but, um, understand your position and, um, and your point. Uh, we were advised, um, in working very closely with staff, that this, it was acceptable. So this is, um, frankly, catching us a little bit off guard, but we did feel like we, and we're not trying to escape it. I think if any developer is open and forthcoming with our plans, uh, we would be in the top 1%.
That, that's my personal concern. I don't think, given the context of what was going on, that the timing of sending that notice out and then the format in which it was presented to be an in-person meeting is conducive to it being accessible. is conducive to it being accessible to people. I just don't.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger. Thank you. I think you've made your point very valid. I'll see if any other council members want to comment on that particular issue. But it is what it is, and of course, you have every right to question that. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Jay, is Jay correct?
Yes, sir.
Just a question in reference to your complete street review. Were there any considerations or concerns about possible bikes?
I don't believe bikes had come up, and I'll turn to our traffic consultant, Jeff. Has that come up, bikes?
You don't have to get up for that. I'm fine. That's good.
Okay. Okay. Any others?
Just a comment. I used to live out that way and very familiar with it. I threw it all the time. And I know that other than across the road behind the food line, it's kind of a sparse or sparse populated area, just a few individual houses out there. And of course, very familiar where that church is at, which is right across the street from where that section's coming out on 1010. Would you say the majority of your mail you sent out to the residents, was that more into the apartment area behind the food line? Or is it, how many did you roughly think you sent out? I'm just curious.
That's a good question. It was, it was a lot more than what I thought, given the size of the parcels. I believe it was around 56 or 76, Barrett. Does that sound correct?
I believe there's a list in the, of the persons, I guess, with names. Okay.
Provide them the same list that would have gone out for tonight's public hearing.
Okay.
We give them the same list for their neighborhood meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I don't know the exact numbers.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was just curious.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes. Mr. Priesture, you spoke about getting a easement from the Lakeside Estates owners. That's residents off of Caddy Road, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so you obviously must have talked with some of those, the Estates Home Owners Association and that, who obtained that easement, correct?
We did. We held a meeting with the whole neighborhood and their town, and their HOA board.
When was that held?
It was on a Saturday, and we met at Smithfield's. What day was that, Barrett?
Okay. So that whole neighborhood was aware of what you were doing? Before the pandemic, before you had your official neighborhood meeting, that, that particular neighborhood was made aware of what you were doing because you met with them and talked about obtaining an easement?
That's correct. If we were unable to, to get an easement to serve sewer for this property, we wouldn't, we would not have moved forward with the zoning. So we shared with them our plans and said, "This is what we're doing." And, and they just signed that about a week ago. So we had an agreement with them. They had their attorney review it, and we've now have a legal easement in place.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Was anybody else going to offer testimony? Are we good?
Unless you've got any questions, I think we're good. Thank. Good from the.
Well, well, let's make sure we've finished hearing from the applicant, I believe, and then we'll, and I guess we have.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll now recognize members of the audience who may want to speak to the issue. Please come forward.
Just one last thing on the recognition of the neighborhood. I saw that they're listing of the residents that they sent the letter out to. I see that they had my neighbor on there, but they didn't have me or the majority of people on the street on there. I know at this point in time, it's too late to talk about the easement since that's already done. Well, I do, I was in attendance at the meeting that we had, and that was pretty early in the plans. Just basically to, for them to ask us for the easement, that was basically what the meeting was about. Briefly touched upon the, the vast majority of their plan. But I would ask for them to include the entire residence of the Lakeside Estates for any more future endeavors in planning. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, I believe we got his name and address previously, did we?
What was your address again, sir?
7812 Crestwood Drive.
Okay. You said your neighbors got a letter, but you didn't. Do you live across the street from your neighbors and the neighbors back up to the property?
Or directly next to me. I saw on their list that they had on the website, on the Town of Garner website, they were given a letter, I guess, of notice, I think, for the one that was about the church, meeting at the church.
Yes, sir.
So I was thinking, I was, I didn't get any letter like that, and so I saw that my name was not on that list.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anyone else come here to speak on the issue tonight? Okay. Any final round of comments, and I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel? Okay. Close of public hearing, and a motion would now be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to find partially inconsistent with the find CUD-Z1911 Ran Mill Village, Ran Village, find partially inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and approve. I move that the council find that although the rezoning request is partially inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan as detailed in Section 5 of the staff report, it is reasonable and in the public interest because it's likely to allow appropriate types of business, industry at the described location, which will provide opportunities for access to goods and/or services useful to the surrounding area, allow developmental retail services, convenience stores, restaurants, or offices uses as desired ends identified in the future land use plan, allow housing, living, and supporting daycare uses that are attractive to younger families with children as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller outdoor spaces, allow the development of appropriate densities of houses in the area in which it is located. And therefore, I move that the town council adopt ordinance number 20204067, approving rezoning request number CUD-Z1911. And in doing so, also amend the town's comprehensive growth plan use map and to designate the conflicting 9.58 acre area on the Caddy Road from Neighborhood Commerce Center, NCC, to Mixed Density Neighborhood Center, MDC.
Socket. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, a discussion for one moment to be on the record to say that if we're going to have rules in our UDO, they need to be followed. People's attitudes can change from February. They can, to March. There's no provision for substituting another type of community meeting that does not follow these notice requirements for another one that happened before. The procedure's there. It's in black and white. The conditions on the ground did not permit folks to necessarily feel safe to attend. They didn't, in my opinion. They have not met the terms as delineated in our UDO, which I think that, why have a UDO if we're not going to adhere to it? That's my final comment. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Downer.
I disagree with Mr. Dellinger in saying that this applicant has gone so much farther and done such a better job of working with the neighborhood than the folks who did the Amazon project, who were forced to meet with the residents. We forced them to meet with the residents. They made no effort at all to meet with the residents. They used them like a doormat and wiped their feet on them and stepped over them and came to us. They did a better job. Your point's right about the pandemic. I agree. That's correct. However, they've known about this for some time. The property does have signs on it announcing the public hearing. And the improvements that they're making, all the transportation improvements, improving Caddy Road is a, is a, is a, well, I think, well-needed improvement. And the other transportation improvements they are, have in line for their site plan, whenever, if that ever comes through, are obvious. So, and I mean, they sent a follow-up letter. They can make phone calls. They could contact us. I might not be in contact with anyone y'all may have. I have not been on this project. So you're right. From the point of the pandemic, I don't disagree. That week was not a good week to meet. But he did send a follow-up letter, which is far better than other applicants and other projects that we've had come before. So we've had to force people to have neighborhood meetings, not just Hilllands. There have been many, many others. So while there is some merit in what you say, I think they've gone above and beyond to let people know what they were doing. And whether this development is built or not, they can make 401 a super street. So the improvements on 401 are going to come regardless of this development or any, or any other future development. So, yeah, it may not have, it may not have been a good time to have a public meeting, but the follow-up letter and the fact that the site has signs on it and they're aware of it, and that he did meet with them in regards to getting the easement for the sewer, I think, I think it affects the residents where the gentleman on Crestview was talking about in Fields Drive more than anyone. But they will have an improved access to their neighborhood, which is, I think, at least a step in, a good step in the right direction to improving that whole road out there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dellinger, Mr. Singleton. We give other council members an opportunity. We have a motion before us. It's been properly seconded, but we're in the discussion period comments. Period. Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Singleton both have had a shot. I'll give.
I just want to respond directly to Mr. Singleton and say I agree with what he said. I don't disagree with the plan or the rezoning, but it's a matter of the procedure. And we had, things have changed since March, even in terms of how people are functioning well enough on the line to have those types of meetings or have them in person. And again, things changed from February to March in terms of attitudes or thoughts and fears and concerns. And as I said, Amazon did it. They had to be pushed to the trough of community engagement much to the different, much differently than this project. But I think if you're going to have rules, you have a follow-up when you have other conditions.
I'm not sure there's. Go ahead, Mr. Dellinger. Please, please go ahead and finish. Other people have an opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you. So that, that's just my point. If we're going to have rules, they should be followed. And if they need to be put off a little bit longer so they can accommodate the rules that we have in place, then that, so be it. And that's my piece.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vance, anything else from you?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Behringer. Discussions and Mr. Mayor. Okay. I'm going to recognize the town manager just before we vote.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that staff, they did consult with staff, and staff did certify that as a reasonable alternative in light of the conditions that we were in at the time.
I don't think staff has that ability in the UDO to substitute a follow-up message for a neighborhood meeting.
Mr. Treesenberg, I see you. Did you want to make a comment?
I did just want, sorry, I'm hearing myself slightly behind my speaking. I did just want, I'm counsel that we did bring an administrative interpretation to, to approve that would apply different alternative methods for accomplishing these meetings. And it included that as long as at least 50 people were allowed to meet, that an in-person would still qualify. Once those, once those thresholds from the governor drop below 50 people, then the Zoom meeting with the alternative phone calls were required. So if we're going by that interpretation, I would hold that that interpretation was met in this case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Okay. Counsel, motion before us. Final comment. I'm going to call for a vote.
Just one quick thing. Is, is that right? Because Mr. Dellinger brings up a good point. But in the first sentence of the motion Mr. Vance made, you know, mentions, I move the town council find that the rezoning request is partly inconsistent with our plan. And we're constantly voting on things that are partly inconsistent with our own plan. I mean, that's, that's beyond us. We're sitting there holding people to standard, but we're constantly voting on things and asked to approve them that are inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. So.
Okay.
Just stating what we've been asked to do and have done several times.
Okay. Counsel, you can vote your, your conscience as we move forward. So, motion before us. All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Please vote no.
No.
Okay. The ayes carry the motion, and the motion is passed, and it is so ordered. I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute recess before we come to the next item on the agenda. I'm sorry. Trying to get ahead of myself. Yeah. We have the second portion of this, which is the CUP. We are ready for a motion. Is there a motion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I find CUP SB 1904 Ran Village, am I the right one?
Mm-hmm.
Right one, okay. Find consistent with town plans and ordinance and approve. I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14D and therefore approve CUP SB 1904 Ran Village with the three standard conditions and nine site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be, that will be prepared by staff.
Okay. Socket. Mr. Behringer, I believe, properly seconded the motion. Okay. Counsel, before we vote, comments, questions, discussions? Hearing nine. All those in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposition? No?
No.
Okay. One negative vote is noted, as on the other one. The motion carries, passes. Now I believe I am prepared to, go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Before you, before you have a recess, Mayor, I'd, I'd ask that when we come back, that the items under new and old business be switched and that we do number two first, since we have residents here waiting for that item.
Okay.
If that's, if that's agreeable to the council.
Okay. Counsel, any concerns about switching? Okay. That seems like reasonable to me. Okay. We'll take a 10-minute recess and be back, and we will, we will handle item number two under old business first. Okay? Thank you. adjourned. For the, before the break, under new and old business, we are going to switch those items, and we will start with what is item number two, 2020 resurfacing contract. And we'll hear from Mr. Chris Johnson, our town engineer. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. This agenda item is to talk about a couple pedestrian crossing up break grade projects that has been a point of topic amongst council over the last few months. And we've been working through both of these projects with NC DOT since both are located on state-maintained routes in the town of Garner. So the first crossing is the one we were hearing about earlier along Timber Drive and Buckingham Road. There is an existing crossing. It's just a standard crosswalk, two, two standard lines, not high visibility, but it does have the flashing pedestrian signage push button that's kind of got some LED lights around the perimeter of the sign. We're going to move that location about 500 feet to the west, just west of the Greenway exit on Timber, where we'll be able to put in a pedestrian refuge in the middle of the current grass median that is there today. We'll have the new concrete cut through, high-visibility crosswalks. We're also going to add yield markings, which are like shark's teeth-type yield markings on each approach to provide vehicles more advanced notice and a place to, to stop. So they're getting, getting kind of multiple countermeasures to the crossing that are, that are not at the existing crossing there today. And then we are planning, we were planning to relocate the existing signage, which I believe was installed a few years back, to that new location. I know there's been discussions about whether those particular signs are the best suited, but we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. And then we would just remove the existing crosswalk that's out there today, which would just be milling up the existing crosswalk. The ramps would still be stayed in place. It's still a legal crossing, but it's not the preferred location. So this was just something I found courtesy of City of Loveland Bicycle Pedestrian Plan. It kind of shows a very close plan that we are doing. What we're installing. What we're installing is what I call a Z-style crossing, it basically orients the pedestrians towards oncoming vehicles, so you can try to improve the likelihood of both drivers and pedestrians seeing eye to eye as they're approaching and to hopefully make sure that people are, are paying more attention to the oncoming traffic, so that the, the concrete refuge is installed at an angle there. So this is a picture looking eastbound on Timber Drive today, the, the Greenway Trailhead is there on the right side of the picture, and this is the existing end of the grass median, and up near the top of the hill is where the crossing is today. And what we're trying to put in here, excuse my rudimentary graphic skills, but we're trying to put in two new curb ramps on each side of the road and then cut through that angled concrete pedestrian refuge, so it'll give people a chance to cross two lanes at a time instead of having to cross five lanes at a time without a safe haven in the center of the road. We would also put in, you see the shark's teeth markings there on what would be the westbound movement, we'll have those on both approaches to sort of help that, as well as having those flashing signage relocated. The other crossing that we had, we've also talked about, is the one on Buffalo Road there at Lake Benson, from the Lake Benson side of the road to the White Deer Park side, there's an existing, it's a two-lane street, but, and there is a high visibility crosswalk there today, but there, there, and there is some advanced signage, but there's, there's no shark's teeth yield style markings or any kind of flashing signage. So this is what we've got out there right now, what we proposed and talked with DOT about is putting in those same shark's teeth style yield markings and then adding, changing out the current signage that's there at the crossing, that's just standard pedestrian cross here signage, to the rectangular rapid flash beacon style, which is what DOT typically uses, that's the, sort of the technology that's mostly used today at these high, high crossing locations. So that would be added there at the crossing. And the main difference between what's out at Timber Drive today, they've got some LED lights around the perimeter, where this one has more of a flashing, I think, go back and forth right under the sign. I'm not 100% certain whether these would be much more visible than the LEDs that are out there on Timber Drive today, but this is sort of what DOT has been using for the last few years.
This is more of a strobe, correct?
I believe it is flashes alternating.
And the pedestrian can press that button when they get ready to cross.
That's right.
Oh, it'd be a big improvement.
Yes. So similar to when, when you guys approved the YMCA pedestrian crossing a month or so back, a lot of the work that's in both of these projects are the exact scope of work that's being currently done on our resurfacing contract. So we reached out to Daniels Incorporated about the potential of getting a change order in progress, because a lot of the scopes of work we already have unit prices for. So we've, we went through and we added the few items that required new unit prices, and the change order cost to do both locations is $46,776.3, and we had also planned to add a nine-day time extension, which is just based on a prorata method of how that cost compares to the overall contract. So if, if this gets approved by council, it could be added to the contract and likely be installed, I'd say, within the next month or, month or two at the most. And so our recommendation was to award the project and authorize the town manager to execute change order number three with Daniels in amount not to exceed $46,776.3. And then if, if council so desires, there is always the option, if you wanted to try to use a different, the RRFB at the Timber Drive as well, you can do that, we do have those prices, I think I looked at the difference and it's roughly about $9,000 or $10,000 more than utilizing the instruct, the existing signage we already have out there today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council, questions for Mr. Johnson regarding this particular issue down here?
Mr. Com, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great idea, especially on Timber Drive, what you've got up there, and allow the crossing people to stop in that median before taking all the lanes at one time and also the Y as well as down there at White Deer Park, I think for safety reasons, it's going to be a great improvement for everybody out there. And more and more people are using those trails out there, I know I am, to the weather got so hot, couldn't hardly get out and walk anymore, but we'll be picking it back up. But I've seen, I've had a lot of safety concerns with crossings there, and I think this will really take care of that, I really do.
Thanks, sir, Ms. Singleton.
Mr. Matthews told me at the Buffalo Road Crossing, if we put his name on there as the Phil Matthews pedestrian crossing, we could cut that cost in half. She brought it up, so anyway.
Can we talk about that?
I've brought up the ones at Buffalo and Buffalo and the neighbors brought that cross and also the one on Timber now, so I'm glad we're doing it the one at the Y, so I'm glad we're doing it, people are asking for, for it to be safer, and I see another town, so go for it.
Okay, I thought, I heard it said that if we did that, he'd want a camera there to take a picture only of him when he crosses through there, so people would know he's there.
Yeah, like Abbey Road. For the older folks.
Ms., Ms. Behringer.
I'm just real happy to see this change, especially the one on Timber Drive is just, was as scary as it is right now, you just, you can't. Like the looks of this, and I appreciate your hard work in bringing it to fruition.
Mr. Dallinger.
Said what I was going to say.
Okay.
Good job.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, I'm...
That's unusual.
I am pleased to see, and I'm sorry, Mr. White, he had to leave, I'm assuming, and he was advocating for improvements at that particular location on Timber Drive, and just one thing that I saw with your, with your AutoCAD skills.
It wasn't AutoCAD, I wish it was, but it wasn't.
But I'm pretty sure it'd be ADA accessible, correct?
Yes, it is, absolutely. Yeah, it did look like it was going a little uphill, it wasn't.
Okay.
Good job, good job.
I would just like, just before we vote, to note, Alan and his wife out there have been in touch with me on several occasions, they follow through very nicely, so we, we hope this is going to be something that's, that's going to be a lot better. Thank you, yes, Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Johnson, if I heard you correctly, you needed council to weigh in whether they wanted to replace the one, instead of relocating the existing solar light at Timber, put in this new design, so you do, that would be additional $10,000.
The, the, initial recommendation was just to reuse the existing signage that was there.
Right.
And that's, that's shown in there, I think, at $3,000. There's also a price for new in the, in the, I guess, the, the second phase, those $6,157.3, I believe it was, for each, and there'd be two of those, so $12,000 minus the three is roughly a $9,000 difference if you opted to go with the RRFB style.
Those lights are not very old, so I would favor moving the existing lights. We have in other parts of town, I would favor that we move the existing lights.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sock it. Okay, any discussion, concerns, comments? We're going to go ahead and take a vote, let me get that, well, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to recognize, very quickly.
The only question, if they're not visible enough, the rapid response, rapid triangle ones that he said.
Strokes.
Rapid rectangular flashing beacon.
There you go. They are very, very noticeable. We just got back from vacation in Arkansas Hot Springs, every single car stopped when those things went off. And this is downtown, lots of traffic, whatever, every single car stopped at these. The other ones, you don't see. I took a video of me before we got here, two of them, and tried to cross, and it wasn't that big a traffic, nobody stopped, nobody sees those lights. And I've put it on Facebook, has anybody seen the lights? Nobody can see those small lights. So I would really, really appeal to all of you to have the rapid lights put there at the new crossing on Timber.
And I appreciate that, but I, I travel 60,000 miles a year and I see them other places and see them, so it doesn't matter what signal we have there, some people aren't going to stop regardless, let's just be honest. Unless we put a traffic cop out there, it doesn't matter what's out there, or a gate, they're not going to stop it, whatever's flashing, but the existing ones have been in service many years, and I see them again at other places, I can see them clear. The best one I've ever seen is in Jacksonville, it's, it's on, it's on the stripes on the ground, and when they cross and you hit that light, the stripes on the ground also light up. That's the best one, especially when it's, when it's dark, but anyway, these have been in service in other places, have been here, I've, I mean, we're talking about a $47,000 additional expenditure right now, and I, I think we should stay right there.
Okay. See how it looks and works, because it's a lot darker down there in that part of Timber, I think the lights will show up a lot better, because it's so shaded, that for more parts of the day, it's going to be more visible than it is higher up, so I would, she's like, no. Let's get them moved and we'll see what they look like.
Okay.
If they don't work, I, I, we could reconsider.
It's also a four-lane divided median road and people are not going to stop. Buffalo's a lot better, because it's on two lanes, and it's, and it's so, so wide, you don't have the trees, you can see the walkers coming up, Timber's just a little different animal, other than a designated crosswalk, it's just, that's just human nature, I hate to say that, but that's, some people ain't going to stop, just like they don't drive the speed limit.
I think the, I think the lights are important, but in my view, having the, what you call a pedestrian refuge is important. I've jogged across that many times and as traffic's coming on, I just get in that big wide middle lane and traffic become, until it goes by, that's kind of dangerous to do, but at any rate. I hear your concern, council, you've heard that motion's properly before us, unless anybody wants to amend the motion, if not, all in favor of the motion on the floor before us now, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no? Okay, and it is so ordered. And Mr. Town Manager, you will be authorized for that additional expenditure, excuse me. Okay, item number, what is number one, I guess, is now number two, Mr. Stallings. Thank you for your patience. You and, so...
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, it's a pleasure to come in for you this evening. You have the entire Economic Development Department here with you tonight, between myself and Mrs. Howell, and so we are going to be presenting to you all the strategic plan the department came up with, along with incorporating our, two of our economic development partners, the GEDC and the DGA's work plan. Also, we'll discuss the data that we collected from our survey back in May, whenever the pandemic broke out, and some initiatives that the department would like to take to implement what we heard and understand from the business community through that data, and then also wrap it up with just some general project updates that I think the town council may be of interest, or have interest in, and take any questions that you all might have. So we'll jump right in here. To my knowledge, this is the first time that the department has had a strategic plan that incorporated two of the three economic development partners that the town funds each year. And the plan that Mari and I set out to put together really is a three to five-year strategy for the community moving forward. It's not necessarily meant to be stagnant by any means, we see this being amended and changed, and we hope we will receive input as we move forward. But this, we believe, is a solid foundation for us to really help direct the day-to-day operations of our department. The plan is divided up into three sections, one that focuses on business recruitment and retention, the other on marketing, and then the other on entrepreneurship. If we look at the business recruitment and retention section, we're really looking at how we can best leverage our limited resources to reach the audiences that we need, such as site selectors, real estate, commercial real estate brokers, also maintain a strong list of sites, and use our partnerships around the community to develop new opportunities and new sites. And then really work with folks like EDPNC, the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, Wake County Economic Development and others, to leverage resources to allow us to attend trips that maybe we wouldn't be able to attend on our own, meeting with site selectors and other professionals in the business around the nation. And then ultimately working with our partners, like I said, the GEDC and the DGA. One of the initiatives that we'll be taking this year is updating the town incentive policy. This is something, the last time this came before the council was five years ago, we have seen a lot of changes with market going up from the recession, the market's even grown even more in the past five years, and of course, we have a pandemic that we're dealing with now, so we believe it is a good time to reevaluate the policies that directly impact our ability to perform as a department, and see what we can do to make sure that we're staying absolutely ahead of the curve when it comes to being aggressive and market rate on incentives. We're also going to be looking at making sure that we are poised to meet the needs of our existing industry. I know prior times before you all, we talked about the importance of going out and meeting with existing companies, and how it is cheaper to create jobs and investment from companies that are here today than it is to recruit new. And so we will continue to do that, and we're really looking at trying to develop an online survey. This is really kind of good timing with the pandemic, it's, you know, normally we attend about 20 in-person business visits each year with select companies, we just can't do that anymore. A lot of those visits are going to be done via Zoom or Teams or, or whatever platform the company chooses, but maybe even by phone call, and there's some things that are lost by not being able to sit face to face with the CEO or plant manager, but we're going to look at trying to use our online sources to reach a wider audience. And then, of course, really getting back to the fundamentals of workforce development, working with our local high schools to prepare high school students that are not college or military bound for the labor force, just a few things, I know we've talked about it in the past, but we are still working with our high school career development coordinators to see if we can still hold our career prep program in the spring of 2021, and that program walks young high school seniors and juniors through writing resumes, interview skills, dressing for success, doing ability assessments or interest surveys, and then partnering them with local companies in the community. And to date, I believe we have actually put somewhere around a dozen students from Garner Magnet High and soon to be South Garner High in companies in Garner, primarily in the trades, and so we look forward to continuing to do that. And really connecting our existing industries with folks like the Capital Workforce Development Board, North Carolina Works, and Wake Tech. On the marketing side, it's about telling our story and helping ensure that we are getting out, getting out our message, we're going to continue to do that, updating our collateral constantly, and continue to grow our media presence. We started using podcasts last year, we're going to work with the PIO Rick and Adam to continue to add to those podcast offerings, and those will be on the new website that the GEDC was, the GEC put together for us in the winter of this past, or winter of this year. Also, we're looking at trying to make sure that we're, once again, because of the pandemic's a little bit different, but at the time this was put together, looking to make sure we were at the right place at the right time. So whether it's trade shows or conferences, making sure we're in the room with site selectors where we can tell what's going on in Garner and pique their interest, and make sure that we're always on their mind whenever a new project comes to them, and also making sure that we are attending the meetings and in the rooms with our partners around the Triangle to ensure even the local developers and local real estate professionals know what's going on in our town. On the entrepreneurship side, we have developed a How to Get in Business Guide a few years ago, we're going to continue to update that and keep that current, but also Mari and I are going to continue to work on our space at Gearworks, investigating the Launch Garner Program, which is out of Wake Tech, and it's actually a national program that came out of Detroit, but essentially it'll walk through would-be or, or even in, in business today entrepreneurs through writing business plans and developing an idea of how to ensure their businesses' cash flow and things like that, and then partnering them with mentors in the community to help them continue to grow their operations or get up off the ground. And then working with Mari to ensure that we are doing everything we can to retain those companies or those businesses in downtown and ensure their prosperity in that unique district. A few other items is, like I said, promoting Gearworks, we have a great company in there now, but we know they will outgrow the space soon, they're, they're close to that right now, and so we're going to continue to have to look for... And so we're going to continue to have to look for new tenants for that space. And looking at is there ways that we can offer new programming to entrepreneurs to get them to locate to Garner? And then unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we weren't able to implement the GET program through the GDC. But this is the Garner Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow Program where we're partnering with the COO of Operation 36 to work with the school system to offer entrepreneurship classes, at the end of which the GDC would host essentially a Shark Tank type style event. And the winners of those events would be given prizes. In this particular instance, it would be laptops to help them continue on their educational journey. Unfortunately, it was canceled this year because of the pandemic. However, we're excited that we can do it sometime this year, sometime. So we're working with the, with the CDC to work that out. And then like I said, I mentioned Gearworks and the tenants are there. On the proposed plan of work for the GDC, this is actually something that you all had seen before. But just to let you all know of some of the things that has gone on with the GDC, we have implemented the new website. We're going, we've worked on logo and branding and have made some significant improvements to our accounting and financial systems there with the organization. And they will now have their own section in the annual report, which will come for you all sometime in the fall/winter of this year. We have also, like I said, been working on the launch program and with Mari with Gearworks, working with our counterparts at the high school and assisting them. The GDC has been a supporter and sponsor of the career prep program, helping those young students get out and find jobs. We head on here to the industry roundtables. Once again, the pandemic has kind of changed that. We're going to have to reimagine what that might look like, but I believe there's a lot of value in that. The GDC is also looking at a revolving loan program or some sort of semblance of that. And so we'll talk a little bit about that later after the COVID survey. But we're in the process of evaluating if that would be a worthwhile tool for entrepreneurs and small businesses here in our community. We're still looking at asset acquisition and dispositions and product development, which I'm sure we will continue to talk with the town council further on this year and in the future.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to share a little bit about the Downtown Garner Association's 2020-2021 work plan. In past years, we brought you sort of our annual work plan. Obviously, this is not sort of your typical year. So we've decided most likely this work plan will serve for about 18 months. This was developed in February of this year with input from the DGA Board of Directors. The board has decided that they would like to focus on a couple of specific things this year. The number one is going to be the public art and placemaking. The first item on the agenda for us to focus on is to get another placemaking mural someplace in Downtown Garner. We've seen a lot of attention and success come as a result of having that beautiful mural on Full Bloom Cafe. So we're looking at, you know, how can, where, how and where can we put another one of those that will continue to develop, you know, Downtown Garner's reputation as a place for art and the community. We'd also be looking at things like doing sidewalk art and potentially using the vacant development pad as a site for temporary public art. Most of our event planning is on hold for the foreseeable future. As you can imagine, one of the new things that we are looking to do is to potentially have sort of a downtown appreciation event for folks that have been, you know, supporters of downtown for the last 10-plus years. And we will, once it's safe to do so, we will start looking at that again. Economic development is obviously a very big part of what we're doing right now. We will be back in August with the consultants from the Development Finance Initiative. DGA is going to continue to serve as sort of the steering committee, so they'll hear from DFI before they come to you folks. And we're really pleased with the progress they're making. We're getting very close to having a RFP for you guys to look at and approve. And once that happens, then we'll be going out to the development community to find someone for that pad in downtown. We'll also be looking at things like a business relationship building program, working with Joe to do sort of the business retention, as well as improving our marketing materials to showcase amenities, our businesses and additional development opportunities. And finally, one of the main things that people wanted to focus on this year was accessibility. A big part of that was sort of the sidewalk network and ability for adjacent communities beyond the downtown district to be able to access downtown. We had discussed hiring a consultant to do sort of a sidewalk analysis, but since the planning department is pursuing a grant with the Department of Transportation to do a similar pedestrian study townwide, I think most likely we are going to wait and work with them so that our efforts can be a big, a part of that bigger plan. So that is what we kind of have on tap for the coming year with Downtown Garner. I'm going to transition now and share with you some of our findings from our COVID-19 business survey that we conducted in May. This was a voluntary survey that we sent out through our social media and the Chamber of Commerce. Respondents were volunteers. We had about 57 businesses complete the survey. Our goals in doing this were to assess the economic impact of closing down, understand the challenges that our businesses were facing during this unique time and provide guidance for future economic development assistance. So I have a lot of graphs to share. I'm just going to try and hit some of the high points. You guys obviously can take a look and see what we have. In terms of the types of businesses that responded, the majority was professional services, accountants, lawyers, people that have folks come into their office to meet with them and provide professional services. Second was professional, personal care and non-food retail. Most of our respondents have been in business in Garner for a very long time. Almost half of our respondents have been in business for over 10 years. Eighty-three percent of them are locally owned, 74% are located within the Garner town limits. More than half leased their space. So this just kind of gives you an overview of sort of what, what the demographic makeup of the business owners who responded is. We found per their responses that 60% of the businesses suspended public operations due to COVID. The number of people employed, you know, were by far, you know, sole owner or operator. Another 30% had two to five employees. The good news is when we asked what, what jobs were at risk due to COVID and the shutdown, over half of the businesses said that no jobs were at risk. So that's a good sign. It may be partially because it is a sole owner heavy pool that we're pulling from. You know, the rest of, the majority of the rest said, you know, one to five jobs potentially at risk due to COVID. At the time of shutdown, only 39% of the businesses had a functional online sales mechanism. And over 90% of them said that they earned less than a quarter of their sales from online business. So obviously in a climate where in-person sales are difficult to do, you know, having, finding new business models to work with is probably a top priority for a lot of them. Because a lot of them are doing professional services, sometimes that's not an option. So that can help explain why maybe more don't have the online sales. They're, you know, the industry runs on in-person meetings a lot of the time. Well over the majority experienced revenue change due to COVID-19. Thirty-five percent said that their revenue was down over 75% from the previous year. Basically, I think 85% or so have experienced some decrease in their revenue from the previous year. We asked businesses if the, if the closing continued, what risk were they at of having to close based on, you know, how long the, the closing continued? And the good news is 36 said it wasn't, 36% said that it wasn't a concern for them. 16% said more than five months, they would be okay. And the rest are, you know, in that range of one to five months, they may be looking at making some tough decisions for their businesses. Businesses said that they were most concerned about losing work, which makes sense, given that they're seeing their revenue being down. Their next highest concern was customer traffic. How do they, how do they, you know, either get back open or look for new business models to bring their customer traffic back in? About a third said that paying their rent or mortgage and their employees' financial welfare was also a big concern for them. I'll hand this over to Joe to share a little more.
So one of the things, and it's to be of no surprise coming out of the data, is one of the biggest ways that COVID-19 and the pandemic has impacted the business is the loss of revenue. And whenever we get to some of the initiatives that we are proposing and even some of the work that the GDC is doing now with the updating of their work plan, which I'm hopeful we'll have completed fairly soon, is really getting to this idea of how do we, as an economic development department and as a community, assess the loss of revenue and how can we support those businesses whenever that is their biggest concern, whenever something like this happens? But like I said, I don't think it's of any surprise that that is a big concern. Cash flow is incredibly important to any business. And then the other thing that was kind of interesting is looking at and seeing that 42% were concerned about the added expenses that would mitigate public safety risks. So I know whenever you walked into the grocery store, you started seeing Plexiglas being put up. You saw, started seeing masks being worn and wipes and all the rest of that. Well, for a large business, that may not be necessarily a huge cost, but for a small, one person or, or two or five person operation, could be a pretty substantial cost, especially considering whenever your cash flows are down. So the other piece of this that was useful for us is figuring out, all right, so what do businesses want? In this particular instance, it was what did businesses want from Garner Economic Development? And it came down to more informational financial assistance. So whenever we had the PPP coming out from the federal government, we had the state implementing programs there with the Rule Center and Golden Leaf and all that, we were trying our best to get that information out to the public and in particular instance, to the business community of the town. And I know the Chamber of Commerce were also right there lockstep with us and trying to get the information out. You know, but once again, customer protection and that, the implementation of those public safety risks or mitigating those public safety risks still ranks up high in this. So looking at how can a business protect not only their employees, but also their customers from the transfer of COVID-19 and reduce the risk to, reduce the risk of, you know, communicating that disease or passing the virus. Some initiatives that we feel are worthwhile for us to take a look at and really get behind. The first, I think, is something that I'm really excited about and I think is important for us moving forward as a community is, is to hold what we're calling, at least for the time being, the Garner Economic Development Summit. And this is for the first time, I believe, in our history would bring together the GDC, the DGA, the Chamber of Commerce, the town, the town of Garner and other economic development partners to assess what each one of us are doing, what resources we have, how can we work together on certain projects and what projects we need to work separately on, but have a general understanding of a solid and cohesive economic development approach, especially in a time like today. I think we need to really understand what everybody brings to the table and what we can all do to help our business community be stronger. The other thing that I made mention of earlier was the GDC is in their current, currently they are working on reestablishing a new work plan for the year. They are looking at a revolving loan fund or even potential or some other sort of financial mechanism to help existing and future companies here in our community. So we are continuing to run that rabbit and I'm hopeful to have some more information to come back to you all with. The final initiative that we're looking at is the Garner Resiliency Preparedness Series. And this would be in partnership with the DGA, the GDC, the Chamber, Garner Police Department, Garner Fire. Essentially, we would be holding online virtual classes, if you want to consider them classes or seminars or webinars, what have you, on business operations. So essentially, what have we learned from COVID? We know that the vast majority of businesses that we surveyed had very little online presence and were generating very little of their business through, through online mechanisms. So what can we do to help inform them and grow their online presence and try to shift to more of an online model? And I know a lot of companies are already doing this. However, I think if we can reach those companies that aren't and get them to begin thinking about how can I grow the online, my business's online presence and offerings, that will help insulate that company moving forward in the next instance of a pandemic. Other things we're looking at is working with the police department on active shooter and crime prevention through environmental design. Once again, helping these companies think ahead about future issues that might come up and also how to prepare for medical and fire emergencies along with hurricanes. So we are in the heart of hurricane season now here in North Carolina, but anytime we can remind companies that, you know, taking a little bit of time early on, preparing for those emergencies now will be much better for them in the long term. So these are just a few initiatives that we're looking at, but we feel have a lot of value that could be added to our business community. Now we're going to hop into just a few project updates. I wanted to make sure you all are aware that the Garner Business Park 70 has their first building up and is up for lease. There are some items that went before the planning commission last Monday, I guess, you know, yesterday. They'll be coming before you all. But just a reminder, this particular industrial park on Highway 70 was only possible through the investment that this town council made last year or the year before. Through that sewer extension, this area of our town was opened up and this park was possible. And now we are seeing the fruits of that labor and of that investment. And I'm hopeful that this area will generate a good return on that investment and allow us to continue to recruit new companies and generate new tax base, new tax dollars here for the town. In Greenfield North, we have seen well over 200,000 square feet of new industrial product be put on the market. And the bottom picture there is a build-to-suit for a construction, construction supply company. It's about 80,000, 90,000 square feet of industrial Class A institutional grade industrial space. And on the top side there is a 165,000 square foot industrial building, brand new. And they're working diligently to tenant that space. I was talking to the broker for Greenfield North yesterday and they have essentially almost run out of space other than these two new buildings. And one of which is a build-to-suit, so it'll be full as soon as CO. But there has been a huge demand, even during the pandemic, for institutional grade warehousing and flex space. And so our warehouse market does, is doing very well in Garner at this moment. The other project was the White Oak, or what is now being called White Oak Innovation Park. This is the Class A, 300,000 square foot Class A office building project there at East Garner Road in Jones Sausage. They are continuing to work. As many of you all probably are aware, the office market has taken a bit of a hit during the downturn with folks scrambling to figure out what, you know, kind of office demand will there be in the future with more and more people working from home. However, in talking with the developer on this, they are very confident in their ability to secure financing and tenants and begin putting this building together soon. So be a huge asset for our community and allow us to really be more aggressive in the recruitment of those office-type tenants. The last one, I believe for me, is the, just some general department initiative updates. We talked about the Garner Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow Program being delayed from last year. We are hopeful to implement that this year. We are working with the GDC to update their strategic plan and hopeful to bring that back before you all here soon. The Connect Conference is still hanging out there. We are yet to establish particular, particular dates for that, but please be on the lookout for those. The Connect Conference, at least at this time, is still slated to occur. We're working through the details. And then finally, our business retention inspection program has taken a bit of a, of a turn with the pandemic, but we are still in close contact with our existing industries and trying to make sure that they see us as a resource and that we are meeting their needs. So to my knowledge, there was only one warrant notice that was issued during the pandemic from a Garner facility and the vast majority of those employees that were laid off have since been rehired. So things are bumpy. Garner has lost jobs. Garner has lost businesses. But we are going to make it through it and so we just got to keep at it.
I just wanted to share a couple of things that are going on in downtown. In addition to the Development Finance Initiative returning to council on August 18th, we're really excited to what they have to share with you. It'll be information about the tabletop parking analysis and adding additional space to the building. We just had a conversation with them that I think is going to bring really good news when we have them back. The former Alco property on Ranville Road is currently under construction for redevelopment. The owners, City Platt, who've come before you guys a couple of times. I was down there the other day and they're working, so they're working on getting those spaces outfitted. The southern building, I believe, is going to be a distillery, manufacturing and tasting room. And the northern building is room, and the northern building is going to be a wedding venue. So they are working on getting those outfitted as quickly as possible. We've seen a lot of property sales and business expansions taking place. I'll share a little bit more about that in a second. But it's a very positive trend. You know, when we talk about the public-private partnership of developing the pad site, it's easy to think, you know, that's only happening, you know, because it's a public-private partnership. But what I've seen over the last year is that the news of that, the excitement around it, the work DGA is doing, is encouraging a lot of private development interest in downtown specifically. So I want to say that I'm very glad that we are, you know, not only moving forward on getting that site developed, I think it's going to be a tremendous game changer for downtown, but we're already seeing the fruit of that coming out as private developers come from Raleigh, the local community, and even beyond that, to start looking at where can they invest in downtown to build new commercial space, residential options, and things like that. And finally, I just took a picture the other day. This is the depot currently under renovation. It is, has been moved as of December. It's looking great. They just got it painted, I believe, and as far as I'm aware, the renovations are proceeding. I just saw Kay Whaley and Judy Bass out there talking with the construction folks the other day. So hopefully they're, you know, seeing the progress that's being made as well and are happy with it. This is just a quick map I wanted to share. This is something that I have provided for DGA in the past that kind of gives an update on, you know, what, what is happening with property movement. And so, and you can see what, what property is owned by the town for public purposes versus potential future development by the private sector. Also showing, you know, what properties are currently under active rehab or redevelopment, as well as some that we know that people are interested, that either have been for sale or that we know people are interested in selling at some point in the future. And then the red is also some residential properties. We've had two new high-end houses built on, just off of Garner Road. It's been a great, you know, sign that people are really interested in having new housing down there. And as I mentioned, the Alco property redevelopment, along with the opening of Shady's in January, have been really great signs as well. David Ball, who owns Ball &amp; Minor, purchased the building that he's in, as well as two adjacent buildings. He's currently renovating those and is expanding his office and will have an additional space ready for rent, I think sometime in the next year. So between the opening of Shady's, the redevelopment happening on Rand Mill, and several of the business expansions happening on Main Street, we're just really pleased to see what's happening in downtown. I truly do believe that this is a result of the investment that the council has put into downtown. And I just wanted to let you know that we really appreciate the continued financial and emotional support you provide to the downtown Garner Association. We wouldn't be able to support this without that support to our organization. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have anything else?
No, sir. I believe that, I believe that is the end of our presentation.
I have a quick question, and council probably does too. You mentioned the Connect Conference. Is the chamber still taking a leading role in that process?
Yes, sir. They are still working through that. We partner with them to hold the conference, but they handle the logistics and some of the programming as well.
Good, yeah, okay. Counsel, I'll start with Mr. Dellinger.
That's a first, all right.
There you go.
Go first this time. I have a, all right, for Mari, a comment. And it wasn't in the presentation because it wasn't directly DGA-related, but I want this whole council to know the amount of work that Mari put into this Garner Small Business Resiliency Fund on behalf of DGA, setting up the accounts and getting the money out. And she worked extremely hard that month, through some ups and downs and pitfalls, but she got it done. We awarded $48,000 to thirty-six organization, businesses. And we got some feedback. We'll probably do another round, too, soon. We have a little bit left over, but I just want everyone to know how much hard work Mari put into that and how appreciative everyone is, the businesses and DGA and everyone else, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vance?
Yes, thank you, Mari, for your, for your hard work and Mr. Stallings. Mr. Stallings works hard as well, putting things together back there. He's, he's, he's very diligent and professional in what he's doing, and I've been working with Joe for a while now, and we, we are grateful to have you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Behring.
Development Coordinator. We had no interest in that. Slowly and with both persistence and precision. Properties that are, how they're owned and what their purposes are, it's just amazing. I moved here, you wouldn't walk down Main Street. I'd down Main Street, it was that scary.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Matthews.
A couple of things. My background's in sales and marketing, so I really appreciate the job both you did on this thing. A lot of very important information here and, and, you know, sometimes I bounce around, but from my military days, I found that it's better to lead than follow, and we're taking the lead here. And it's nice for the competition to follow. Just a couple of questions. How do we stack up with the, say, some of the other towns in Wake County as far as what we're accomplishing versus, say, Fuquay or Zebulon or in and around, I know Raleigh and Carr is in their own world over there, but towns, towns our size. How are we stacking up in what we're doing compared to them?
Yes, sir. I mean, obviously, I'm biased, right?
I'm sure you were.
I think, I think we're, we're well ahead of some of our competition. Certainly, every community has their own strong points. Because of our location near Raleigh, because of the investment that this town council has put in the economic development department and strategic investments in infrastructure, and willingness to see some of the developers come and lay some of the burden on infrastructure development on them, I believe we're, we're in a great position. I would say, in some ways, we are the model for, for the way a town council can work with the private development community to, to see strategic, positive investment placed in our community. And I think we'll continue to be that way. So like I said, I'm very biased, and certainly I know Fuquay, Zebulon, Knightdale, Wendell, they're all doing wonderful things. And I don't want to take away from anything that they're doing, but being able to have these nonprofits in place that work hand-in-hand with staff and with the town council to achieve goals puts us well ahead of the competition.
That teamwork's important. Another item, of course, we approved the Amazon facility, which is a, a great big diamond for our town here as far as a marketing tool, once they've finally got everything completed out there. And I'm sure you guys are doing that, but I would encourage a nice flyover as part of our production when we're going to visit these places, you know. Why did Amazon come to Garner? Because, one, two, three, four, you know, and so that would be a great tool. When I was a county commissioner, the marketing part, I was very much involved with bringing new businesses to Wake County. And, and you guys might be already doing this, but a lot of times, we use Wake Tech as a great tool, as a training tool, because businesses come and say, well, you've got a strong labor market, but are they qualified? Well, we met with the president of the college, he says, we'll set up the programs for any industry that's coming in, we'll set up a labor force. That's from the what it's worth. I'm sure that I would encourage having that relationship with them because that is a great sales tool. We can train the, the force. And is Wake County, as far as their marketing, helping us pretty good, or how much business are we getting out of them?
Sure. So Wake County Economic Development really is, you know, marketing the entire county. That being said, they have produced flyers for us in the past that they take to the shows that we, you know, we're not going to. Our budgets are fairly limited, and they have a few more dollars to play with. So they're always out there helping support every community in Wake County, and we have a strong partnership and the entire staff. And to give you all kind of an idea, working with Mari and myself, we've both been here for about five years. And so we've seen, you know, I think it's a pretty conservative estimate, around 4,000 jobs, new jobs created in the past four years, or four or five years, and vast majority being Amazon, of course, but, and that, that's directly stuff that we work on. It's not the, the things that, you know, a lot of economic developers may take credit for things that they may or may not have a direct impact with. But, you know, those are jobs that we've helped with, and we're really proud of that. If you think about the town of Garner's labor force is about 16,000 people, that's about 25% of our labor force that has a new job that they go apply for. So I, I think, I think we're doing, we're doing great things, where there's always room for improvement, and we'll continue to figure out new strategies and new opportunities to leverage our assets and bring good, positive, worthwhile development and job creators here to our community.
That's a positive thing. We was talking about the commercial buildings out there, how quick they're being scooped up. I think we've hit a hot button there if we can capitalize on that, because if everybody's coming, there's more, which means more jobs, more revenue, and more people spending money in Garner. And lastly, I just want to, you know, we've got this COVID-19 issue. Some people, there's some towns out there, some businesses, you know, they just throw their hands up in frustration, you know. We don't know how long this thing is going to last, but what we need to do is attack it, continue doing what we're doing, going after business in a very safe way as much as we can. And, because people are going to live, they got to work, they're going to play, they're going to spend money. And if we can, we can't let this COVID-19 slow our town down, and I'd encourage you guys and team to stay on fire, don't let it get you down, and let's just, every time there's an opportunity, let's just jump in the middle of it. So if I sound positive, that's because I am, and I appreciate what you're doing. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to run so long.
I'll give him some time anyway.
Thank you all for the presentation and the information. I do appreciate it. To quote our former colleague up here, Mr. Jackie Johns, "I concur with everything that's been said and all the compliments that have been paid." I'll keep it, I'll keep it short.
Joe, if you will. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Did you have?
I just made sure I said, "I concur," as you've heard Mr. Johns, one of his favorite phrases to say.
Yeah, I was going to just say, could you make a quick comment regarding, I guess, sort of a announcement today as relates to Amazon and their, their, their plans and, I guess?
Certainly, yeah. I should have probably let out with that. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. So today, in the TBJ, News and Observer, there was an article that I was quoted in with Amazon has gone from fifteen hundred, now they're doubling, over-doubling their employment there at the Garner facility. So we're going to see upwards, I think, probably well north of 3,000 employees there, which is, once again, a huge opportunity, especially in the time that we find ourselves with unemployment being what it is, for folks to really get a good chance at, at gainful employment. And insurance is a huge thing. And of course, the career choice program that they offer to their employees to gain further education. So I think, you know, with what all is going on, I'm hopeful that Amazon will continue to be an asset to this community for a very long time and will help us even, not to get too much into it, but help us to address some inequities in our community in the Triangle so folks can have a chance at a better and brighter life.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you both, Mari and Joe, for the good work you do and...
I do have one question.
Okay.
Do you have any more information or elaborate on some of the potential loan projects? Like what sector would you be targeting as far as business size and those types of things? Have you thought that far out? I know it was done three to five on the plan, but I was curious.
Yeah, we, we're, we're working through all those details. Right now, we're trying to find partners. One of the issues that we found is one of the partners that everybody was using as that capacity to take money from anybody for these type of programs. So we are trying to look at all of our options. We have not sat down and really laid out a template for the program as to who would be eligible, how. The other thing that was brought to our attention is potentially looking at a, a loan guarantee program instead of a revolving loan fund program, essentially helping businesses get debt or, if they so choose, take out a loan, instead of offering the loan ourselves. So I think there, there's ways to skin the cat that we are still working through that maybe we didn't have in our mind's eye early on. So we'll, we'll be having a discussion about that in the future, I'm sure.
A lot comes if you can run sort of a pilot of your own until you can operate it, you can actually use other people's funds to distribute it for them, you don't have to use so much of your own, you can kind of be the intermediary. And as far as ways to like help COVID-stricken businesses on the short term, grants are a good way to go. It'd be good to, when we do our next round, to get some more funds in there, too, so.
Absolutely. Really noted.
Okay, thank you both. We appreciate it.
Quick question, Joe. I'm reading the Triangle Business Journal article. Isn't the Amazon facility 2.6 million square feet?
It is the footprint, I guess, the, the first floor of that facility is somewhere around 640,000.
240,000, that's what they put.
So four stories, four times six, 2.4.
2.6 million square feet. They put it here at 640,000 square feet, so it's incorrect.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we can't control what they write, councilman, but...
We need some, they need some correction.
Yes, sir.
Anyway.
Okay, thank you both. We appreciate it, sure enough. And counsel, and for those remaining, I know the hour's late, but have a couple more items we need to finish, so I'll ask you to be concise as much as you can. Do we have any committee reports at this time? Okay, hearing...
Public Works Committee is scheduling a meeting. You want to go over the details, John?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public Works Committee is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 in this room and not in the training room as was previously publicized.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Managers report?
Yeah, you got two standard reports that we normally have, the Garner Info and then the Quarterly Financial. I could there. Financial report is kind of a snapshot where we were at the time, but there's a lot of closeout things that happened after July 1st, so it will be ended accordingly over the next few weeks.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at that and compared notes. Okay. Is that it, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, counsel reports, be as brief as you can. Counsel, I'll start, I'll start with Ms. Behring, you're right here.
I only have one item, sir, and this is the third time I've brought it up. That little, like, six, seven-inch wide median between the lanes at Benson Road and Garner Road needs to be trimmed. It would take three minutes with a weed eater. It's nothing, but it's, it's scraggly looking and it's got some trash in it. It's right, here's the toot and tell, here's webs, it's right there.
I think they thought they...
Yeah, we've, we've gotten several places like that, not, not all in that exact location. I thought that we had taken care of that, so I'll have to go back and double check.
When I rode by tonight, it's got little sprigs sticking up all over the place. And the median, it's not very wide at all. We could probably do without it completely if one to take it out. But if we're going to leave it there, it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
Just two quick things. I just want to thank the town staff, town manager and staff for how quickly they ramped up the COVID site a week and a half ago and how supportive the town was at having those locations. There's a lot of demand, a lot of tests, and I'm proud of the effort that the town put forth to make that happen for our residents. The other is progress on this development pipeline report. Been, or we need, where are we?
Sir, I mentioned to you last night that, that we've got several questions that we want to be, that was the email that I'd sent you to...
Okay.
So we can do that tomorrow. We're at a point that we just need to air what staff's doing versus what your expectations for the next...
Okay, so first draft. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Dellinger, I think thanks is directed your way in terms of being a shaker and a mover in terms of getting some of the COVID testing here as well, so thank you.
Done it without the, the town stepping up to make it happen.
Okay, good effort.
That's what we made it happen, so.
Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead.
Can I piggyback on that? I think they did, the first day they did 400, which was the capacity, and then the next day they did, the first day they actually cut it off at 2:30 because they had enough, enough people in line that would have taken them to the end. And then the second event, they did, I think, 391, somewhere in there. And then the last event, which they cut off at noon, they did right around 400, so.
Yeah, okay.
It was an increase in efficiency over with the routing of the traffic and some of the stuff they were doing, they were getting through so much faster that they had, they just ran out.
Very good, very good.
Liberation process, speed of thinking, electronic.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No, sir. I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Singel.
Yes, I'm sorry for my tardiness tonight. Sometime I come to work in my work, I come here in my work clothes, but you did not want me here in my work clothes tonight. So I did go home and bathed. I want to mention something briefly. The signs we put out when we're going to have a public hearing, CEP, SUP resigning, those signs, in my opinion, should be bigger, and there should be multiple signs on a lot, a piece of property. I get by these signs sometimes, and I look at them, I think, they're just, they're not very noticeable, and there should be multiple ones on a piece of property. I've seen some, in Raleigh is one town I know of, they, they put a big sign on a, on a sawhorse, you can't miss that. All of them always had dates, a lot of times they put a sign out and say, "There'll be a public hearing on this within the next 30 days, contact town of Garner Planning Department, et cetera, et cetera." I just think our signs should be more noticeable. I told Mr. Dellinger this morning, I had an appointment in Cary, a doctor appointment, went by a large, large project that was being done, there's one little sign there, right in the middle of it, and that could have been a campaign sign, it could have been, "We pay cash for houses" sign, or "We got mattresses for sale," or whatever. I just think they should be a little bit bigger and more than one should be on there on a big piece of property. I just, I just think they should be noticeable, some people can see them. I know, not everyone, you know, notices the signs, but at least we should put the signs out there. I just think we should revamp our sign program, that's it, I'll stop. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Matthews. Okay, I'll give counsel one reminder. We're, our retreat is coming up on the 29th, and I'll be sending out probably the, the proposed agenda for that from our facilitator, who will get that out, I believe, tomorrow, probably, so be looking for that, and there is some pre-preparatory stuff to do, so if you have any questions about that, well, you know, feel free to call me, or the town manager, or John, or somebody, or Matt. Okay, and the only thing I'd mention, I thought the community event we had on Saturday was, was unique, was the first time of that type, and appreciate those who were there. In many ways, it was a bubble up from the community itself, the town just sort of facilitated it, but we'll see, that leads some future events, but overall, I thought it went very well, so a couple of you had a chance to come out for that. Okay, that's all I have, so I believe if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed, excuse me?
I want to apologize to Mr. Hodges. He told me last night to check my email, because he had something for me, and I didn't check my email, so I apologize.
It's the same thing as last night, so we're good, we'll get it this week, when you can.
I just want to say, I've experienced that with Mr. Dellinger, too.
Yeah, it happens. I get busy sometimes, and I won't check that email for a day, so.
Session's good for the soul.
I apologize.
Bad for the reputation, yeah, I guess, okay.
He told me I needed to do it, he told me last night.
We're going to close session, we'll come on General Statutes 143-318-11 subset A, subset four, to discuss economic development.
Second, anybody? Yeah, okay, Ms. Behring. Okay, all in favor of moving in a closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it, anybody no, and it's so ordered, so we will.
I think we're staying here.
Okay, counsel is now back in regular session, having gone into closed session to receive information from our Economic Development Director on some pending projects which were discussed, and we expect to receive additional reports at a future date. We took no specific action at this time. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, properly segmented and motion made and segmented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so ordered, stand adjourned.